Welcome, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Greater Nappany regular session of council for the twenty fifth day of April two twenty twenty three. Just to remind everybody that this evening's meeting will be recorded and live streamed to the Town of Greater Nappany YouTube channel and also a little bit of housekeeping. We've got some new microphones here. Which gives council the ability to turn on and turn off. So it should help a little bit of feedback for those of people that are watching at home. So as long as we remember to push the button, we should be in good shape. And as well, we do have councillor Hicks zooming into the meeting. So she's she'll be on the TV screen as you can see. And and I'll try and keep an eye out for as much as I can in case she wants to weigh in on anything. So. Having said all that, we'll now call the meeting to order. We'll start off with our rising report from closed session. I'll look for a motion to rise and report from our closed session. Meeting that we had earlier this afternoon, moved by councillor Penal, seconded by deputy mayor Calver. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. I'd like to report that in closed session tonight, council approved the closed session minutes from April eleventh. Reviewed the nominations for senior of the year award and gave direction to staff. Received for information, a confidential staff report regarding negotiations to be carried on by the municipality and gave direction to staff. And received for information, a confidential staff report regarding a matter subject to slot solicitor client privilege and gave direction to staff. Having said that, I'll look for emotion for the adoption of the agenda as presented, moved by councillor Shank, seconded by councillor Penal. Comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Presentations. We'll start with presentations. In this evening, we have a presentation from the Algonquin and Lakeshore Catholic District School Board, J.J. O'Neill. Capital project, and I believe we have Brian Davies here. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. Through you, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about what is truly a good news story. Not only for the Algonquin Lakeshore Catholic School Board, but I think for the town of Greater Nappany as well. Back in February of twenty twenty two, the provincial government agreed to provide funding to construct or reconstruct our J.J. O'Neill Catholic school. The existing school consists of three, what we call bricks and mortar classrooms, a seven classroom attached porta pack. And then four portable classrooms. They have agreed to fund a new school that will accommodate three hundred and thirty one pupil places in fourteen classrooms, along with funding a three room childcare center that will take over our existing, what we call bricks and mortar classroom spaces. So if you're looking at the school on the left hand side of the school. From the main entrance and for we call the heart of the school, that will become a childcare space. One room will be for toddlers, for ten toddlers. One room will be, or sorry, ten infants. One room will be for toddlers. It'll accommodate fifteen toddlers and then a third room will accommodate twenty four preschool children. With respect to what you see up on the screen, part of what we are looking to do and what we will be doing is we will be making some site improvements to improve the safety of traffic flows on the school property. In order to protect our students, our families. As we we move forward and also to alleviate some of the congestion that I know happens on the municipal streets in that area during, in particular, the pickup time at the in the afternoon, there is a bit of congestion in the morning as well. If you could just move forward to to another slide. So in front of you, we've provided sort of two options. Option A is within our existing property boundaries. You can see that we will be looking to create a drop off zone over on the top, which is that circular area, increase the amount of parking that we have on site. We will also have, if you were to look on the the lower area, a parking area that will be dedicated to the childcare. And then what we would like to do also is open up a bus loop that would connect Maryland Avenue over to First Avenue and allow our buses to go around on their own sort of traffic pattern. When you're looking at onsite traffic, one of the things that you really want to do is you want to separate where people park for the long term and get out of their vehicles, where parents are dropping off their students. Where the buses are being picked up and dropped off, as well as provide some separation for our childcare. The area in blue that you will see there, that is the addition that we are proposing for the new school. It will be a two story school built to fulfill the needs of our students. We have in the past fall done some consultation with our school community around UDL, Universal Design for Learning. In order to meet the needs with my gray hair, when I went to school, we needed to learn a lot of information and put it into into our brains so that we could draw upon that later. In today's world with cell phones, with computers, that information is readily available. And what we need to teach our students is obviously to read and write, but also to how they interpret the information, how they can decipher the information that they read. So we will be looking at doing this. This project, we are part of the provincial government's, what they call rapid build pilot project. They are doing seven schools across the province. We were very fortunate to be one of them. And we are working very closely with Infrastructure Ontario and the Ministry of Education. Infrastructure Ontario is leading the design and will be leading the construction part of this, which is unique. Boards have always been done this on their own. Moving on to the second slide, one of the reasons for being in front of you tonight is not not only just to present the good news story and the information that we're doing, we will be making some submissions to the municipality very shortly around our project, seeking feedback on the design to make sure that we can move forward with both site plan and building code and building permits. One of the areas, and I know over the years, my predecessor in the role of controller of plant planning services, I know there have been a number of discussions around the parkland. These were instigated by both parties. Nothing was ever able to come to fruition. In option A that we presented earlier, you could see there was a bit of a pinch point as we get up towards the rail bed where our triangular land becomes very narrow. This option B, there's a piece of parkland there that we would very much like to enter into discussions with the municipality on. Whether we may be able to obtain that to allow us to make even further improvements. With respect to the parking, we would be able to provide additional parking in close proximity, close proximity to our school. One of the things I would note here that according to the municipal zoning bylaws, it would require when you're dealing with a parking lot, it's a three meter offset. The offset that you would see here that is drawn, it's fifteen point three meters. So it's about it's over fifty feet that we would be proposing to provide. Our board has always tried to work in a collaborative nature with our municipalities, but also with our neighbors. We recognize while schools are core to any community, we are also part of that community and we need to be cognizant of the needs of others that are around us and try to facilitate that as best we can. I'm happy to take any questions, but that's sort of a synopsis of where we're at, and I know that we will be presenting more information to the town later on. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. Does anybody have any questions for Brian? We have a couple of questions, councillor Norrie, and then we'll go to councillor Penal.
Thank you, through your worship. The option B, behind the parking lot, the triangular, is that the green space that the people on Union Street that have been calling me about is their park that they've used since they were children? Is that the area there?
Through you, mayor. Yes, that triangular, that's white. So on this image up here, you'll see the dark gray where the parking lot is in that area around white. That triangular piece is the piece that I am sure those neighbors would have been calling about.
Yeah, but you're aware of the petition from them about like, is that going to stay parkland or is that going to stay green space or is the parking lot eventually going to expand to that area if you buy that land?
Through the mayor, with respect to what you see, you'll have in the gray area that will be asphalt. The white area would be green space as far as fencing for our property. In order to keep our students in, we'll be fencing around the school area. So that area wouldn't be fenced. It would be open to Maryland Avenue and would be open to other usage. Again, we're happy to work with our neighbors and happy to work with the municipality to see if we can't come to some common ground as may be needed there.
Yeah, yeah, good. We have councillor Penal and we'll go to deputy mayor Calver. Thank you.
Thank you, worship, through you. Brian, thank you very much for coming in and giving us this presentation. My question to you is the difference between option A and option B in regards to the parking. How many more parking spots would you pick up with option B? And do you need that much? That many? I see that the building envelope for the school would remain the same, but only with the addition of that lot, it looks like parking.
Through the mayor, with respect to option A, as it is shown, that would contain sixty parking spots. With respect to option B, as it is drawn, we would get seventy eight parking spots. When we're speaking about the number of parking spots, the municipal bylaw calls for thirty two parking spots. It's based upon nine square meters in the gym area and what that equates to, it equates to thirty two. I was speaking with principal Dory yesterday, just to ascertain how many staff they have. Currently with two hundred and sixty nine students, they have twenty five staff plus five lunchtime supervisors. With respect to the daycare or the childcare, I don't have those numbers, but from other similar sized childcares, it would appear there would be ten staff there. So just with staff, we're going to expect to have about forty staff at maximum between these two sites. So then we would have twenty, the one option, we would have twenty additional parking spots for parents. The other option, we would have thirty eight additional parking spots for the parents. And I do know, having driven by there a number of times, when you look on the municipal street on Maryland Avenue, and I don't know the name of the cross street off the top of my head. There are a number of cars parked there primarily in the afternoon, but also some in the morning when we have the drop off period. So we're hoping to be able to bring those all onboard and be able to provide, once they come on site, sort of controlled spaces for all of those individual groups as they move forwards. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, councillor Penal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, Brian. Just as a follow up, because you you mentioned that the childcare is this, this is obviously something new for schools. And can you just help me out with why it is needed to be placed in the school?
Through the mayor, whenever boards are asked to put in for a capital project, so a new school in addition. We're asked to reach out to the CMSM. So I think I wrote it down here. I almost forget what that title is. It is the Consolidated Municipal Services Manager who's responsible for childcare. So for this particular location, we reached out to Pam Kent. They indicated that there is a need in this community for additional childcare in order to support the families. So the ministry ties it in a lot of times with schools. We are currently, we are a very fortunate board. We are currently either building or designing five brand new schools. This being one of them, we are aboard with only forty schools. So we are competing with GTA boards in terms of the amount of construction. We are putting out there, four of them have childcares in them, only one in Prince Edward County doesn't. Through you, mayor.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Calver.
Dave stole my thunder on that one. I was inquiring about the parking spaces as well, but that's already been answered. Thank you.
Councillor Martin.
Brian. Appreciate the presentation. The childcare facility that's going to be going in there, is that just for staff, children? To have a facility there, or is it going to be for outside community use as well?
Through the mayor, it'll be open to everyone. So you will apply to for a slot and it'll be open to anybody in the community moving forward.
So it's not just for teaching staff to bring their children and okay, okay. And the parking area that you want to put in, is there going to be any bus routes in that area or just just car parking only for staff?
So if you look at the top horizontal gray line that's coming in, that's Maryland Avenue.
Yeah.
So to the right, the big long area will be angled parking.
Yeah.
So that'll be for staff and long term.
Yeah.
We'll also have over on that side, a drop off loop where parents can drop off, kiss and ride. They can drop off their students. To the left, closer to the school, you'll see a bit of a parking lot that'll be dedicated for the childcare and for our accessibility parking spots. And then the loop that comes around and ties in the first avenue, that would be for the buses. So they would use that and come out onto First Avenue. And and again, what it does is it provides for a safe travel path for all of our students. And that is something that our board is very, very cognizant of, as all boards are moving forwards. Thank you.
Yeah, good.
Thank you, mayor. So if you were not to get that parking area there, that would inhibit you quite substantially, I'm assuming, for for staff parking. It's it's it would be quite congested without it.
Through the mayor, yes, looking at sort of the site and the layout, it really does congest us. We do get this, I call it a pinch point up in that one corner. It does sort of restrict where we can provide some additional parking. But again, you know, we're we're very happy to work with both the municipality and with our neighbors and come to a common ground, if you will, for the benefit of everyone. At the end of the day, when we redevelop the school site, it will have, could have up to three hundred and eighty students there. And along with their families who are also members of this larger town of Greater Nappany community. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor Calver.
Through you, your worship. Great presentation, Brian. Just want to yes or no. So option A could or would work if you couldn't acquire that little chunk of land.
Option A, as you see it, would meet all of the requirements of the municipality, yes.
Thank you. Councillor Shank.
So going, so going forward, this conflict of interest for me to my grandchildren go there. And I do drop off my grandkids there and because we're not in the bus loop, but it is majorly congested. And we're parking down the street in front of residences and everything else. But so of course, I'd love nothing better than option B, but we have to be fair to the residents that are backing that also. So is there any way that we can have another meeting, all right, proposing this showing option A and option B to all the residents that are concerned about that parkland? And with a fifty foot buffer and it's not showing them basically the schematics, what's going on, what isn't going on and any concerns that they might have. Because if I was a resident in the back of that, you know, and I have a fifty foot green space in between a parking lot, I have less concerns than I would have was a playground. You know, and balls going into my backyard and kids screaming if I came off a midnight shift or whatever. But if we engage the residents that were concerned about this area and show them the schematics, maybe they'd be more apt to go with option B, but I'm biased because I would, you know, I just know the congestion and there's major congestion there at that school. And the school's only growing.
Yep, thanks, councillor Shank. And this evening's meeting is just simply a a public presentation by the school board. So I'm sure that we will have further conversations and discussions in in the future. I I just have a couple of quick questions and if everybody else has finished. Briefly, Brian, is there or was there any consideration, the parking lot that would be placed in the green space that is currently owned by the town? Is there any consideration or thoughts of moving that parking that parking space to the south? And run it off of that loop road where the buses are? Or is that, I'm sure you probably, there've been a lot of considerations, but that that's my first question, I guess.
There has been, obviously, we've we retained a traffic consultant as part of our design team. And they've looked at a number of options. Obviously, if we move it further to the south, we're going to have more interactions between the childcare, between the buses and between the vehicles that go down there. The second part of that would be the proximity of that parking lot to the school becomes much more remote. And I always use the analogy, if you go by a mall at before it opens at nine AM, you'll see all the cars parked quite close to the doorways. Well, those are all the workers who are probably asked to park far away. The human nature is that we all want to be as close as we can get. So you're going to end up with a lot of congestion, I think, up in that area. That's why we're trying to keep it all together, the the parking for the school in one area. But it was something that was considered, yes.
Yeah, okay. And I and I'm sort of thinking outside the box here with respect to, I know it's a green space now and in the public the community up there understands and wants that. But if you could incorporate that into your playground and keep it a green space, it may help. But I guess the second question is, is we're talking about public consultation, have you or what is your plans with respect to the, and I know you've mentioned it, but what's your plan as far as the public consultation? We'd be sending people out to knock on doors. We'd be having public meetings. What's what are your thoughts there with respect to getting the public input with respect to this in that neighborhood?
Obviously, we have our own process that we we have with our school community. So in the the fall, we went through a whole discussion, not so much about this particular site plan, but a bit about what the school's going to look like, what that community is going to grow, how that's going to work. With respect to the public consultation process, there is the site plan process. Through any site plan process, there is that element of public consultation. And we're happy to work with the municipality in in terms of any consultation that may be deemed to be required.
Okay, great. Was there anything that out of my conversations that come up the council wishes to address or talk about? No, seeing none. Thank you, Brian, very much. It's always good to to get these heads up and presentations with respect to something like this. So we very much appreciate it. So thank you for coming tonight. And I'll look for a motion to note, receive the presentation of Brian Davies with respect to the Algonquin and Lakeshore Catholic District School Board, J.J. O'Neill Capital Project. Moved by. Oh, sorry, I keep forgetting about councillor Hicks.
Making the motion or seconding.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hicks. Did you have any questions or comments outside of what we've already seen?
No, I did not. Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hicks. The motion to note and receive was moved by councillor Hicks and seconded by councillor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks again, Brian. Much appreciated. Okay, we're moving on to to the deputation stage, and I think we have a number, at least three of registered deputations with respect to this evening's meeting. And we'll start with Martin Barstow. If he could come up and good evening, sir. If just for the folks at home, if you could speak directly into the microphone. It makes it a whole lot easier for the people at home to, we're able to hear you here, but want to make sure that everybody at home can hear you as well. So go ahead and we're going to give you approximately ten minutes, and I'm always a little bit flexible with the time, but go ahead and and we're ready to listen. Thank you.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm certain I won't be using all ten minutes of that. Just for some context to my point, about twenty years ago, the town's Solid Waste Advisory Committee recommended to town council that they bring in the Recommended to town council that they're bringing the bag tags and their goal was twofold at that time. The first was to. Really institute a user pay system so that the more garbage you produced, the more you'd have to pay to dispose of it. And the other one was that the proceeds were supposed to go to a public education campaign to teach people how to reduce their waste. The problem I have with the proposed. Increase, despite the fact that it's it's clear that the impact, you're trying to reduce the impact financially on people. By saying we're going to levy a hundred dollars for six months, but you get twenty five bag tags. It the problem with that is that if you're producing a a bag of garbage a week for your household. Then really the increase is about fifty cents per bag. Because it used to be three fifty and now it'll be four dollars. And and in fact. The so the total amount, because I'm, let's say for the sake of argument, this is going to roll over to two hundred dollars a year. So the the total.
The bag type.
Oh, and you got you got your microphone on there, Ange.
Is it three fifty now, I think?
I believe it's three dollars, but some some distributors may be charging three fifty. So once, once they leave our hands. Yeah, so I think at the town level is three dollars, so.
Well, to get to my point, if you don't produce very much garbage, for example, in our household, we produce about ten bags a year. Then we have been paying, if we've been paying three dollars, then we're paying thirty dollars a year. And that this is going to be an increase then for us of a hundred and seventy dollars a year. And when I look up and down my street on on garbage day, there are a lot of people who don't put out a bag a week. The other problem with it is that at two hundred dollars a year. We're producing ten bags of garbage, that's twenty dollars a bag that we're going to be paying. So the people who've actually been trying to reduce their waste by composting and using the recycling program are actually going to. End up bearing a disproportionate burden for the cost of this. And and really too much money, twenty dollars a bag. That was really all I wanted to say.
Okay, no, that's great. And and that's what this evening's deputations are all about. So. Does anybody have any questions or comments from Mr. Barstow? And I know with that, later on in the meeting, we're going to have an actual staff report. That we're going to have a whole lot more discussion on, I'm sure. So so you're more than welcome to stick around, but there will be further discussion later on. So. Is there any questions or comments from Mr. Barstow? Seeing none? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is. Okay, sorry, we're going to do a motion to note and receive for each of the deputations. So I'll look for a motion to note and receive the. Deputation of Martin Barstow with respect to opposition to the proposed waste collection levy moved by Deputy Mayor Calvert, seconded by Counselor Martin. Questions, comments or concerns, all in favor of the motion, opposed, the motions carried. Sorry, Madam Clerk. Next up would be Jeff Chestnut.
Good evening, a bit note about the fifty cents. If you look, a lot of communities put within their bylaw, how much more you can charge for a tag for the community. To have an understanding of how much to charge extra. I would point out that in town where most renters are, they've been paying fifty cents extra. It's been. Pretty much fifty cents a garbage bag tag. That's why some areas, it's three dollars down by the bay, way up north. But right across the street, where they did building without building permits and owned by a multinational. They charge fifty cents to their customers. So that's a bit about the fifty cent and the three dollar tag. I would like to thank your Honorable Mayor Richardson and fellow council members to voice my opposition to the proposed. Garbage bag increase. I should say the guaranteed increase. In researching bag tags, there is evidence that nearly all communities have adapted a bag tag policy. The minimal exception Kingston, Leamington, who have been programs are in the minority. Before we go further, we need to answer clearly, why do we have garbage bag tags? Why and why do we increase the cost of garbage bag tags? Other than finding multiple articles about increasing bag tags in many communities, there seems to be very little complete. Or a complete absence of data collection to show that the implementation of garbage bag tags reduces garbage. I would ask if council has the numbers to show how much garbage has been reduced so far. Since we've had a bag tag program and for a very long time now. We should have the numbers about how much garbage this program has reduced. Though we keep backing it and keep adding to it as though it's working. Though I can't find any information in any communities on this. I would suggest that the bag tag system is nothing more than a money shuffled by goodwill with property owners at the cost of property renters. Not to get off topic here, but do we really want to be the cause of another part of homelessness within our community? As we have multiple people living down by the river because they can't afford the rent inside our town. Let alone the fifty dollars a month that it would cost for garbage if you got three tags per week. And every, I know everyone's going to say, oh, well, we should reduce to one bay. That's fine if you can get outside. Where do you reduce? If you have a child. That goes through diapers to children, that's a half a pound per diaper. Start adding it up. And. You're you're at two garbage bags with just diapers for weight allowance. If you have kitty litter and I'll tell you in the community, this is a growing problem. They won't take the kitty litter because it weighs too much. Therefore, it gets dumped outside the town somewhere. And I would sure our farmland community would be interested in where this kitty litter goes is it's a very toxic substance. I continue on. I'd like to take a quote right from Waste Management here. Ontario's availability for landfill capability is expected to be exhausted in twelve years. Or by the year twenty thirty two, which is about two or three years before you guys go back into negotiations with them. Just as a heads up, knowing this, I would suggest that the bag tags do not reduce garbage. But may in fact increase our garbage output due to the false feeling that you have paid for it to be eliminated. It is not being eliminated, it is being stored. What I do know is that bag tag increases making Waste Management stock rise to a hundred and sixty five dollars a share. I would also like to quote Waste Management's. Their investment team here. We have a strong track record of dividend growth consistently increasing the dividend rate for more than fifteen years. With a compounded annual growth rate of about six percent over the last five years. If you're familiar with stocks, this is an aristocrat. This company is at the top of our TSIs. They're making tons of money. If council wants to reduce the output of garbage and they truly believe in the bag tag system. They would increase the tapes to six fifty where the slide ends and use the extra money to come up with a solution. Because that's where we are going. An approach I would suggest is instead, and this is going to really drive the room crazy, instead of raising the hundred dollars. I would raise it two hundred. I would eliminate tags, which we're supposed to be doing. It's a single use plastic. And we're supposed to be eliminating single use plastic, both garbage bags and the garbage tag are single use plastic. So I would increase double what you're going to do. Everyone, we get two, three bags of garbage per property. After that, ten dollars a bay, no limit, get the garbage to the dump. Quit having it end up in the rivers. They want to put out ten banks, let them put it out. Ten dollars per bay after two banks. As Waste Management pointed out, landfill space is running out. Following the theory of supply and demand, the cost of greater nap knees garbage will superinflate. Basically, this is what we are being warned by our disposal contractor, Waste Management. What will the. Harshness of the next contract be when there is near zero landfill space? Remember, the company's name is Waste Management, not Waste Disposal. We at a provincial level are paying to store our garbage until we as a community come up with something to eliminate the garbage. What a perfect business model where a weekly payment program pays the storage of garbage until our youth can deal with this mess. Under my proposal, the town would be accountable to take extra funds and invest them in a solution. And maybe that solution could pay dividends for the town of Greater Nappany in the future. That's where I was going to end it, but there's a third group that will never speak out. And they'll never vote, and that's wildlife and our and our natural vegetation in the area. We all see the pollution heads down river, goes to the water. We're in a special system with the Bay of Quinety. And it doesn't let the pollution go out to the lake so we can ignore it. As contraband litter multiplies in the environment due to the garbage bag price. Native spawning beds will be destroyed, natural nesting areas will be eliminated. And scavenger animals and plants will continue to replace our original flora and fauna. The property owners will be punished and the renters will be able to move away and leave us with our pollution problem. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Jeff. Just hang tight and we'll see. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Chestnut with respect to his deputation? Saying none, thank, oh, hold on, I think Counselor Hicks has one. Sorry, Ange, I'm going to get used to looking for you here yet. So go ahead.
That's okay. I'll be back in person for the next one. Jeff, I I saw that you didn't have a copy of that. Presentation for the meeting, but could you send a copy to Jessica so she could distribute it, please? There is, there is some interesting facts that you quoted there that I'd like to have a look at.
Oh, my my notes, you mean?
Yes.
I could pass my notes on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Hicks, and we can. Sorry, we'll we'll make arrangements. We'll we'll get it started out. I I know you're probably not going to go anywhere, so we'll get it started afterwards anyway. Thanks. Thank you, Jeff, and much appreciated. We'll look for a motion to note and receive the presentation of Jeff's Jeff Chestnut with respect to the opposition of proposed waste fee increase. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calvert, seconded by Counselor Norrie, but there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of the motion. Opposed, motions carried. Thank you very much. Next up would be Ron Murray with respect to opposition to the proposed waste collection levy. Run up, Ron. It's a lot easier when you don't have to go first, so. But yeah, if you could just pull the microphone up just so the folks at home could hear. It's great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so through your mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Counselor Martin and Deputy Reeve Calver. For having the insight to vote against this proposal in the initial round of voting. The new proposal for the hundred dollar. Charge for everyone's tax bill. And then sending them twenty five bags tags in the in the year. And then subsequent years, two hundred dollars and fifty tags to everyone's homeowners is wrong in many, for many reasons. Bag tags should at least in part be a user pay system, as has been the case in the past. We currently use about twelve to fourteen, sorry, ten to twelve bags a year in our household. And you're now telling me that I must pay for fifty. There are many households in this municipality that don't put out a bag of garbage each week and should not be expected to subsidize those who do. This new policy will hurt those who can least afford it. Based on numbers provided to me by Christie Kelly, if you raise the bag tag to four dollars a bag, but don't force them on the taxpayer. There would be an additional two point two nine percent increase on their tax bills. For those who have lower property taxes because they can't afford the fancy high end homes, the annual two hundred dollar tax. Could amount to as much as thirty percent. On their town portion of their taxes. As Christie pointed out to me. This increase that's being proposed is not on your total tax bill, but on the town tax bill. So not on the county, not on the education tax. Is that correct, Christie? Is Christie here? Yes, is that correct? Yeah, so I just want to make sure I have that correct. So if it's only on the town portion, that could be a thirty percent increase. On a lower income household. From an environmental impact aspect, we should be encouraging everyone to reduce the amount of garbage we put out at the curb. By rewarding with less cost if we reduce our garbage. Our landfills in this province are rapidly becoming full and it's more important than ever to reduce the garbage we put out at the curb. Being told we must pay for fifty bag tags a year is going backwards in terms of conservation. If I use one bag tag a year, that's what I should pay for. If I use a hundred, that's what I should pay for. That is is how our now non complicated tag system works. You're creating an administrative nightmare. Residents currently pick up and pay for the bag tags they need. Now you'll be mailing them out at a cost. To many people who don't want them or need them. There's the issue of how to deal with landlord tenant situations, how not to double charge for farmers, businesses that already pay for their garbage removal. If it's necessary to increase the bag tags, that is one thing, but don't force everyone to pay for fifty tags if they only use twelve. We need to encourage people to reduce the amount of garbage we put out and this policy does nothing to achieve that. I have a question here, but I'm going to leave that to the end. I'd like to quote a statement that my wife has put out on social media. My wife Marilyn Murray is the chairperson of the Lenoxon Addict and Stewardship Council. And she has been a member of that council since its inception over twenty five years ago. And I quote. Children are taught at an early age, the importance of the three Rs, reduce, reuse and recycle. They are also taught that of the three, reduce is the most important. The current user bait peg to system reflects this fair system. As a household of two with composting and recycling, we produce approximately one bag every four or five weeks. Buried garbage in landfills produces methane, a potent greenhouse gas that contributes to climate change. We should be working hard as a community to reduce the impact for the sake of our children. We understand costs increased and are happy to pay more for the bag tags, but we don't feel it's fair to subsidize the cost of other people's tags. There is a fourth R and that is rethink. I asked the town of Greater Nappany Council to rethink this new bag tag policy. As a resident, parent and grandparent, I ask you to have vision for the future of our community. That embraces sound environmental principles, end of quote. Then the question that I've left till the end, and I have some other comments here as well, but. We have a waste diversion committee. Was the waste diversion committee consulted on this topic? Can someone answer me on that?
I believe, I don't believe so, because I think we we haven't, have we had a meeting with the waste diversion yet? I think Counselor Martin is on that, is are we not?
We did have a waste diversion committee meeting prior to anything to do with the bag tags. The waste diversion committee has not had an opportunity to weigh in on this, which is. It's going to be in some of my comments later tonight, but.
So it seems to me that would have been a prudent thing to do was to be to consult that committee. It was made up of staff members and volunteers in the community, some of them that are very knowledgeable on this topic. It would have been very prudent to speak with them before making any new policy decisions. So a couple other comments I'd like to make. Sending out a bag of take, a bag tag a week for every household, when your your own statistics, which I've got off your website. Show that over the last five years, not including twenty twenty, when we had a period of free bag disposal. There was actually point five seven bags of garbage put out per week. And you're sending a bag out per week now, which is almost double what the requirement has been in the last five years. So you're sending twice as many tags as people need. The percent tax increase for some properties can be enormous. A property paying a total tax levy of twelve hundred dollars, of which fifty percent is the town taxes. Would face a thirty three percent increase in their taxes with a two hundred dollar bag levy per year. Whereas a household paying twelve thousand dollars in tax. Whereas a household paying twelve thousand dollars in taxes a year, a fifty percent of which is town taxes, would only pay face a three point three percent increase in taxes. And both of those scenarios are real scenarios in this municipality. In what other scenario would you accept something sent to you in the mail that was unsolicited, unwanted, accompanied by a bill that you're demanding to pay? Only government can get away with this type of policy. No one wants to pay higher taxes. However, we all know that taxes are a part of life. We just want to be treated fairly while still doing our best to look after our planet. One way of doing this is to reduce the amount of waste we send to landfills. This proposed bag tag policy is wrong, and it will not achieve this. We have a property taxation system that has been in existence for generations. It's based on our property assessed value and the municipal tax rate. Adding any six dollar increase to anyone's taxes always creates a hardship for those who can least afford it. There is a much bigger issue at play here as well, and that is how did we get to such high costs for our solid waste? How did we negotiate a ten-year contract with Waste Management containing non-disclosure agreements that make it almost impossible to know how we can reduce costs since we don't know what is in the agreement? Many have suggested we need to have bi-weekly pickup. Apparently, that is not an option due to our contract with Waste Management. What other restrictions are there on how we can reduce our costs? We are a community, we as a community deserve much more transparency around this and other issues that affect us all. Personally, my recommendation regarding the need to cover the costs of of the current solid waste. Excuse me, I should have brought the water bottle with me. Getting a very dry mouth.
It is it is dry in here, so I I know I drink a lot of water as I'm talking, so.
So my recommendation would be to increase the bag tags to four dollars. I have no problem with that. Do not send bag tags out to people. Let them pick up their own bag tags. Increase the additional taxes of two point two nine percent, which is a much less hit, especially to those who can least afford it. But over the long term, we need to understand what measures we can take to reduce our ever-increasing costs for our waste disposal. To do this, we need to know more about the restrictions that are being imposed on us through the contract that was negotiated with Waste Management. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks, Ron. Just just hang tight and we'll see if is does anybody have any questions or comments for Ron? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Ron, I just wanna say, both you and your wife's been very insightful. Very good presentation tonight, and you've covered a lot of stuff that I was gonna cover later. You could probably save me a lot of time, but I I have to say, I I mean, I I mean, I'm only one person on council, but I agree with virtually everything you've said here tonight, so. I just wanna thank you for the total presentation you made.
I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. You thanked me at the start, so I wanna thank you. I didn't want you to go with it. With that, thanks.
Is there anything else from anybody? Seeing none, I'll encourage you, Ron, as well to to hang around. We're gonna have a little bit more robust conversation with respect to this. I know that we've already had a bunch of conversations, but things, there's always two sides to every coin, right? So I would encourage you to stick around to hear some other comments, so thank you very much. I'll look for a motion to note and receive with respect to Ron Murray's deputation with respect to the opposition to the proposed waste collection levy. Moved by Counselor Pena, seconded by Counselor Shank. If there's any further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of the motion. Opposed, motions carried. Now, we do offer up an opportunity for unscheduled deputations. Should anybody wish to do an unscheduled deputation, of course, they won't be anywhere near as long. We're only gonna permit according to our policy about three minutes. So if there's somebody that would like to come up and do an un-registered deputation, you're more than welcome. We'll just do a motion to accept that. Yeah, come on up, ma'am. And I guess what we need to do is do a motion first, will we, Madam Clerk? So I'll look for a motion to accept unscheduled deputations. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Comments, questions, concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carry, and we'll just get you to to say your name, ma'am, and like I said, unfortunately, we can't give you the the full ten minutes, but we'll give you as much as we can in the area, three minutes. So go ahead.
I'm Natasha Augustine, and so I don't I don't need three minutes, but I just thought I'd come and ask in person because we're all discussing on Facebook and sending Jessica a million emails. The SPC meeting on May eleventh. So everybody is wanting it to be live streaming. I understand we're recording it and putting it on after the fact, which is great.
Can I can I just stop you?
Changed.
No, but this has to be with respect to something that's on the agenda tonight, and unless it's on the agenda tonight, am I am I wrong?
I'm learning council procedures.
I hate to shut you down, and I hate to close you off, but we may we we may be able to give you an answer if you wanna stick around, so. Madam Clerk.
So I can advise, since there may be some other people in the room interested in this information, we are working on a updated communication about that meeting. It should be going out on Thursday this week, outlining what our options are for that meeting. I can't promise anybody live streaming because, quite frankly, the internet reception in that room is terrible, and we don't think it will support it. But we will record it. We will have it uploaded after the fact, and we will do whatever we can to find other accessible options for people who can't be there in person. So look for more information later this week.
I guess they've done it at the last another one, so everybody's wondering why this too, but no, okay, so I'll know for next time.
Yep, thank you, and and I apologize, but like I say, we gotta try and stay as focused here as we can, right? So, but I appreciate you showing up. I know you've been here before, and I know you're paying attention, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to do an unregistered deputation? Seeing none. Can we move forward, Madam Clerk? Marvelous. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes with respect to the regular session of council, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. I'll look for a motion to adopt the minute the the minutes as presented. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Correspondence for information. We've had a bunch of correspondence for information that was sent out earlier. Is there anybody on council that would like to pull something out and speak to it specifically or separate from all the other correspondents? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to note and receive the correspondence for information with respect to the items dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Correspondence for action, eight point two point one, we have a the Greater Napany Pride, and we have correspondence for action with respect to that. Do we have somebody here to speak to that, Madam Clerk, or will you be speaking to it, or?
Through your worship, I can speak to this item. So last year, when Greater Napany Pride submitted their proclamation request, they also submitted a proposal for painting a crosswalk and hanging banners and doing some other visual displays within the community. Council does have a proclamation policy that supports that. The policy also states that during the first year of a new term of council, every proclamation request come back to council just to to re-verify that this council is supportive of those activities continuing. So Greater Napany Pride is just looking to put a fresh coat of paint on the things that they did last year and looking for council support to do that.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is there any comments or questions with respect to that, Counselor Pena?
Thank you, worship. I I'd like some clarification on part of this letter. It's unfortunate that nobody from Pride is here to be able to answer it, but maybe we could reach out to him. In the first paragraph, just that they're stating that they want to do the 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 crosswalk and the picnic tables, but I like clarification on the part with any other pride-related visual displays that require maintenance. I'd like to have to know a little bit more about what that is.
Yep, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
If I may, your worship, I sorry, that was some some wording that staff assisted with on that, but I believe it's just like, I know they painted the letters by the river last year. And I think it's it's not an intention to add anything new that wasn't there last year. If that helps address your concerns.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it it does, but I I wouldn't I wouldn't be supportive of anything else being painted without them coming to us.
And and through your worship, I believe that is that is the intent, and that can be communicated to them. The council's intent is repaint the stuff you did last year, but not no new things.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Pena. Is there any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Through your, sorry, through you, your worship. Did we hang banners and stuff downtown last year along the parade road?
Yes, I'll take that. Through your worship, we hung banners in Marcus Square last year. And the cost to purchase the banners is the responsibility of the group requesting them. The town assists with installation.
I think we're getting into more questions and answers, I think, Madam Clerk. I I know we want it, we we want to be very specific with respect to the request, I think, is is the important thing. Unfortunately, I think we're we're starting to get more questions than answers. I I think this council is very supportive of of the movement. But I think what we need to do is maybe see if we can get some specifics as to what's going to be done and what's not going to be done and and things like that, but that's that's just my opinion. I I it's just it's a little bit open-ended from what I can see from the letter. I think I think council is very supportive of the movement, but it's we're leaving more questions than answers as to where flags are gonna be hung. That kind of thing, so. Is there any way that we can get some clarification prior to June? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, Madam Clerk, because I know you're trying to trying to patch this thing together, so.
Through your worship, yes, we can we can get council the clarification you're looking for.
It just I I think we have a new council, so we some of us may or may not have been here for last year to know what what's happened last year, and I know the request is to do the same as we did last year, but some of us don't actually know what happened last year, right? So that's the difficult part, so.
Through your worship, I understood staff can reach out to this group and request more clarification about what exactly they are proposing to do.
Is there any other further comments or questions? I I just think it would be it would be a little more appropriate if we had some specifics, but go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Sorry, well, that, yeah, I I have no problem with, you know, maintaining and doing everything we did last year, that type of thing. I just, you know, when it says more ban, you know, banners downtown along the parade road, I mean, I just wanted more clarification how many we're talking about.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Shank.
My only concern is is that we're gonna get specifics of what they're doing, what they're not doing, as long as any other organization that they're all treated the exact same way. So if you have heart and stroke, or if you have, you know, fire prevention week or whatever, so every other organization, so everybody's playing on the exact same playing field. All right, so as long as we have specifics of what they're gonna do, what they're not gonna do, or where the flags are gonna be done, or what they're proposing, then we have that information, then we can make an informed decision just for the parity of with all organizations that have it. We currently have a procedure bylaw that does that too, doesn't it?
I believe we do, do we not, Madam Clerk, with respect to to this, or no?
Through your worship, yes, the proclamations and flag raising policy was updated during the last term of council to be expanded to allow for more visual displays in the community and a little bit more flexibility it provides for the community groups to work with town staff on what is feasible and where appropriate locations for these sorts of displays are.
Okay, is there any other comments or questions with respect to this? And 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 again, I I don't mean to put you on the spot, Madam Clerk. Do we have enough time to bring this back in two weeks in order for for these folks to to do what they want to do with respect to the 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 pride celebrations in June?
I believe so.
Yeah, no, I know, and and I understand that, and I I don't mean to put you in the spot, because I know that you're just trying to help out here, so I I just don't wanna be you know, adversely affected if we haven't got enough time to do it, but if if the celebration, and I I'm sure that they they've got all kinds of plans and 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 things planned for for the celebration, just a matter of us getting the details on it, so we know how to prepare for it, I guess, is is basically what it is, right, so.
Through your worship, I do know that they are actively making plans right now around that crosswalk specifically, trying to line up a contractor to get that done. I believe that's the most pressing piece of this request is to make sure that that can all be done in a timely manner, so that it's good to go for the event for Saturday in June.
No, okay, and that and that's great, and like I say, that that those are the things that we know, we see, and we understand, right? It's just I think that we're some of the 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 problem is is that it was left a little bit open-ended, and and we'd just like to get the clarification on some of the open-ended stuff, the stuff that we do know, we do see the crosswalks, the lettering that's down at Kensington Park. Those are the things we all seen and understand. It's just just some of the the open-ended stuff. I think it probably should be maybe addressed, so. Great, we appreciate that. Thank you very much. We'll need a motion, I guess, with respect to this. The council received the for information for that council approved the request from the Greater Napany Pride to be refreshed and maintain community visual installations installed on municipal property as outlined in the correspondence, and we need to adjust that motion upon clarification of the details that we talked about this evening.
Would a potential option be subject to a detailed plan being provided to council? At the earliest convenience.
I believe that actually works. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we'll look for a motion. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Next up is the emergency prepared preparedness week proclamation request, and we have requests with respect to the emergency preparedness week proclamation. I I think everybody has an opportunity to read it. We can have some further discussion on it if and it's quite a long proclamation. Does anybody want to have any discussions on it prior to? Great, perfect. So we do have a proclamation with respect to, I guess the only question I have, Madam Clerk, is have we seen this one? I think we did last year, or have we? I believe the fire chief can weigh in on this one.
Through your worship, yes, every year this happens at the exact same time. It's like Fire Prevention Week, except it's for emergency preparedness. And council has been very supportive in former years.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Counselor Shank moves the staff recommendation with respect to the proclamation, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished finished business, Madam Clerk?
Through your worship, no, we do not.
Thank you, committee reports, the draft downtown advisory committee minutes. I think we've all had an opportunity to 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 peruse them with respect to the minutes of the April 12, 2023 meeting. Is there any comments or questions with respect that come out of that report? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to note and receive the minutes of the downtown advisory committee for April 12, 2023. Moved by Counselor Pinnell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motion is carried. Community and activity reports, 11.1, Community and Corporate Act Services Activity Report. Do we have someone here speaking to that? I guess it would be Mr. Zadabert.
Your worship, nothing additional, but available to answer any questions?
Thanks, Grant. Is there any comments or questions with respect to that report? Oh, I see Counselor Hicks waving that. Go ahead, Ange.
Whoops, sorry, sorry, your worship, I just had to unmute myself there. Grant, just regarding the skating at the SPC, I saw the skating opportunities, and you've got some numbers there. How does that actually compare with, say, last year or the last couple of years? Or I should say, pre-COVID, is it lower than it was prior to COVID, do you know?
Through your worship, the numbers are actually higher than than they have been in the past?
Okay, good, I'm glad to hear that. It seemed to me they they weren't, it wasn't very much, but if it's higher than it was, then then that's good. So, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there any other questions or comments with respect to that report? Seeing none, moving on to the activity report, Financial Services, April 2023, and I believe Nicole Davison will be speaking of that.
Through your worship, I don't have anything to add other than there is one small typo in the last sentence of the report. It states there was one successful tax sale, that should be that there was one scheduled tax sale, but that property had been paid in full. So the the tax sale was canceled on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, great, thanks, Nicole. Is there any questions or comments to Nicole with respect to that report? Seeing none, next up would be the activity report with respect to fire services, and I believe Chief Hammond would be on board for that one.
Through your worship, I have nothing further to add to the report, but I'm happy to answer any questions on it.
Thanks, Bill. Is there any questions with respect to that report? Nope, seeing none, moving on, activity report, Growth and Expansion, April 25, 2023, and I believe Mr. Nobes will be speaking of that. Go ahead, Michael.
Through your worship, I don't have anything else to add, but I'm available for any questions that's needed.
Thanks, Mike. Is there any questions or comments with respect to Michael's report? Seeing none. Moving on to activity report Legislative Services, April 2023, and I believe, Madam Clerk, that would be you.
Through your worship, I don't have anything to add, but I can take questions.
Thanks, Jess. Is there any questions or comments for Jessica with respect to her report? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to note and receive the activity reports from Community Corporate Services, Financial Services, Fire Services, Growth and Expansion, Infrastructure Services, and Legislative Services for the month of April of 2023. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Staff reports, 12.1, comments received, read the proposed changes to the solid waste fees. And I believe maybe Christie may be up for that one.
Through your worship, um, at the time of submission for the report, we had received the 30 questions and nonofficial comments regarding the special proposed special tax levy. A large majority, I'm sorry, I'll backtrack there, since the time of the submission, we received about another 20. A large majority noted that they do not use one bag per week, or that they are, were proposing to provide too many tags to them. A lot of residents were just seeking additional information and clarification about the proposal. Others noted that the process encourages more waste. Some were worried that this will increase roadside litter dumping in ditches. There were concerns about the administrative costs for mailing out the tags. Some mentioned that the increase was was not affordable. Many noted that they've already purchased their bag tags for the year, they buy in 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 bulk at the beginning of the year. And then there were a few concerns about this, inquiring if this recommendation came from the Waste Diversion Committee, as we had heard earlier here. And then some just offered general suggestions and other ways to go about this process, which I believe is the rest of the comments are summarized in the report before you. There were three registered deputations, which you've seen here tonight, and eight written comments that are provided attached with this with the staff report.
Great, thanks, Christie. Does anybody have any questions or comments with respect to Christie's report? Counselor Hicks. I think you're muted, Ange.
Sorry. Oh, I swore I would never do that again when I retired. Okay, so, sorry, through through your worship, Christie, in the course of your conversations with some of the people that called you or emailed you, did you explain to them that, yes, this is related to solid waste, but it's also the curbside pickup for residential units? I I heard one of the deputations mention tonight that farmers and commercial businesses shouldn't be penalized, which, of course, they won't be because they don't have curbside pickup, which the levy is is directed to. I know you've done a really great job with the question and answer, but when you were explaining this to people, did they get it? That this isn't just about a bag of garbage, this is about the service of having the garbage picked up literally from your doorstep on a weekly basis, and also your recycling?
Through your worship, so yes, a large, as mentioned, a large majority of the questions or comments we did receive were general inquiries to gain more information, and we we tried our best to any comment we received or question, we tried to give additional information, referring back to the frequently asked questions and going back to the full costs and and what they're pre-existently paying for and such. So we did take that opportunity to try to educate residents, and I would say that a large majority, I couldn't tell you an exact number, but a large majority, after we were able to answer those questions, that was kind of the last we had heard from them. Now, there were some that would obviously noted that, yes, they understood that, but they still had these additional concerns that are noted here.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Counselor Hicks, Deputy Mayor Cowher.
Through your worship, what is the breakdown of what it costs to have that truck just drive by my house? Whether it picks up garbage at my place or not, just to drive past, what does that cost?
Unfortunately, I don't have those numbers exactly in front of me, but it was approximately 70% of the costs were fixed costs for the garbage, curbside, curbside garbage and recycling collection.
I thought I heard a number somewhere around $133 per residential household, whether it picks up garbage or not to drive through. So if you took that off of your $200 for next year, you're getting 50 bag tags for $67. I voted against this the first time around, I didn't get it, but when you look at what it actually costs just to have those trucks drive by our house, forget about picking up garbage, it's not that bad.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver, and I I'll try and clarify some of that stuff. Is there any other comments or questions? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Pinnell.
Thank you, through your worship, Christie. If we go ahead with the 2.89, I just want this to be, I know we covered this, but I just want this to be out in the in the open. If we go with the 2.89% increase, and we raise the bag tags to $4, and we put the $100 levy on it for the remainder of this year, there would still be a $453,798 residual, correct? It's it's on, it's on the question and answer sheet that you gave. I know I'm a numbers guy, but that's that's what you you presented presented to us. So that levy still needs to be paid out by the general tax, right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Pinnell, that is correct.
And and if we were to keep everything the same, that residual would be $848,574.
That is correct as well.
Okay, thanks. So this is where council's going, where it's more than just a bag, a a bag of garbage. There's there's more monies being spent than coming in.
Thanks, Counselor Pinnell. Is there anybody else that wishes to weigh in prior to me? Counselor Martin, go ahead. This is this is on the report, but I'll suggest, I mean, we're still going to have a conversation, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, that we could still have an opportunity when we go to pass the bylaw, am I correct?
Through your worship, you you could, but your next item of discussion is your budget. So if you're going to change something with how you do bag tags, that's changing the figures in your budget. So you need to know what you're doing before you can talk about the next report on the agenda.
I just wanted to make some comments about the bag tags. I guess you're going to make some too, Mr. Mayor, but I just wanted to make sure I got some comments in. As far as the bag tags are concerned, Ron Murray made most of my points anyways, but there's there's a lot of things I did want to say about the bag tags besides, so.
I I I would suggest you take the opportunity when you have it, and so take as much time as you need, and and go ahead, Bill.
Okay. I I may not need a lot of time because I won't touch on everything. Ron Ron covered a lot of it, but and I don't, I I'm not in any way criticizing Christie because she's my staff member with, on the Waste Diversion Committee as well. So she does a great job there, but one of my great disappointments is that the Waste Diversion Committee was not consulted in any way on bag tags this year, and I mean, if if there's any reason, I I don't understand why there wouldn't be at least give them a chance to weigh in on this, because we are a committee. I'm on the Waste Diversion Committee, council is representative on that, and it's extremely disappointing to me that we have not been able to weigh in on that. We've got another committee meeting in May, which is going to be after the fact, so. So that's one one big concern I have is our committee wasn't even respected enough to be asked for our comments, that's one one comment I will make. The other one is concerning taxes, of course, and Ron did mention something about the as far as the assessed values are concerned, because in some of my figures, I'm, you know, everybody's going to brag about only putting in 2.8 9% tax, like, in the general levy, but they're not adding that there's going to be, in some cases, 10% addition with the tax levy, or 7% or 5%, depending on what your taxes were. Somebody with 2,000, excuse me, somebody who paid $2,000 last year could be presented with a 5% increase this year, and 2.89 on top of that, so 7.89. I'm just looking at some of the figures. And I'm sure you'll correct me on some, Mr. Mayor, if I'm if I'm not quite on. I'm also concerned about some of the landlords, I mean, you're creating a a problem with landlord tenant relations. I know of a gentleman I talked to last week, two weeks ago now, I guess, who has a fourplex, he's only going to get enough bag tags for one tenant, he gets 25. He doesn't get, like I said, only single family mailouts are going to happen, so he will get mailouts, but only for a single family. I believe that's what you told me, Nicole.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it will be per role number, so if you have one role number, you will get one charge and 25 tags.
That's right, so. My concern is the tenant situation, we have a lot of tenants in Napa, they're not all land, they're not all homeowners. Bag tags, tenants go and buy their bag tags, and they still will be able to, of course. The town probably maybe expects the landlords to just give them to the tenants, but if the tenants right now are paying for their own garbage removal, some landlords are going to have to swallow a fairly big bill to give the tenants the bag tags. That's up to them. But what we're really doing is we're forcing people to pay for something they don't use as well. And you're discouraging people from recycling. Two to three years from now, I believe it's 2026, the municipalities were supposed to be have that charge of the blue box recycling taken away. If we can believe the interior government, we're hoping that's what's going to happen. So we're, at that time, we're going to be begging people to recycle because we want to get it out of the garbage stream, and we want to get it in to recycle because hopefully we won't be paying for that. So this year and next year, we're telling people, go ahead, fill your garbage bag full of garbage. You got a, you got a bag tag, you might as well use it. So I think recycling's going to take a hit. And I think people, instead of recycling, are are just simply going to fill their bag tag, or bag garbage bag, and not recycle, and that that really concerns me, especially when I'm a member of the Waste Diversion Committee, and we want to keep waste out of the landfill. I think instead of merely trying to figure out how we're going to pay for a cost, we ought to try to reduce the cost. And that can come from green bin, it can come from, we'll we'll be talking a lot, I'm sure, the Waste Diversion Committee over the next few meetings about how to divert waste from the landfills. But that's where I think we need to not consider ourselves as much how we're going to pay it, but let's reduce the bill that we have. If 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 you can understand what I'm saying on that. I'll I guess I've said enough, Mr. Mayor, I'll I'll let you take it from here. I'm just concerned about the whole bag tag affair, it's not, it's not going to be a fair system. We're doing it in two or three different ways. Some people will be buying tags, others won't. Some people have extra bag tags left that they can't even use. You're putting landlords in a bad situation. We have, businesses will not be participating in the levy. Companies like McDonald's, Tim Hortons, we take garbage home from there, it doesn't go in their green bin, or in their bin, rather. We take it home, put it in our household garbage, put it out to the curb. So they are actually producing the garbage, but they won't be participating in the tax levy. So I I have a lot of concerns about it, and I think we're going off on a, in a situation where we haven't really looked at all the consequences of our actions, and just mailing out the bag tags, to me, at least I had my, in my figures, $10,000 to $12,000 it's going to cost the town to mail those out. And afterwards, we're going to have people phoning 99 advance, saying, where's my bag tags, I didn't get them. What are we going to do about those people? Are we going to have them all sent out by registered mail, so everybody has to sign for them? Are we gonna have them all sent out by registered mail? So we, everybody has to sign for them? I mean, what are we gonna do about all that sort of thing? Has anybody thought about those things? I'm done. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor.
Yep, thanks, Councillor Martin. Um, if there's nobody else, I'll, uh, Councillor Shank, and then I'll weigh in, sorry.
Going through the, the budget this year, it was extremely hard. You have to come out and you have to think outside the box of uh, how can we have the, the taxpayer pays for all the bills? So we have to figure out, how can we do a one point four million dollar? And we're in only year four out of a ten year contract, how we're gonna come up with this money? Sure, you can go ahead and put it on the tax levy, it's the easiest way to do it, but if I have a bin at home and I don't even put bags out and I'm a grandparent, as my wife and I are the only ones in the house, and we would put out one bag every other week uh, at the most. The point is, is this, because since we have, I'm just bouncing around here, but we have an aging community that are, a lot of them are retired, they're on fixed incomes, they're not, don't have an index pension. All right, so they have to do with more with less. Sure, the easiest way to go ahead and raise it will five point one eight percent, but that five point one eight percent, does that equate to more or less? Is this a perfect system? No, there's flaws. There's, I agree with Councillor Martin that, yes, there's, there's flaws on anything that you're gonna try. Is, we're gonna see how it goes, all right? But I feel uh strongly that this would have better impact on the rate pair, at least impact than raising the taxes. The easiest way to do is raise taxes, but how would you feel if you were a multi-res when you were talking about condos or apartments? The guy has five units, so therefore the, they don't pick up garbage, they have to get rid of their own garbage. And this is a residential rate of five point one eight percent. Multi-res, if I remember correctly, is one point eight nine times, it's almost twice the amount. So all of a sudden, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, Nicole, uh, so you'd be almost a ten percent or just let's say nine percent tax increase. You know, I mean, this year on a multi-res. Now, I will guarantee you that nine percent on what they're paying on taxes. All right, this way here is a whole lot cheaper, all right? And they're gonna pay that on taxes, all right? Where they don't, this way here, the tenants are gonna be buying their, you know, by their, getting a free bag, but they're gonna, other ones are gonna have to buy it. It's the least impact compared to the tax rate that they were gonna get. So I'm just looking at the numbers. Is this the perfect system? Probably not. There's gonna be hiccups along the line. And, and also Angela, I am a farmer and I will have to, because I have a residential unit, I get taxed one hundred percent on one acre plus the, plus the house. All right, and my buildings are a hundred percent, but the point is, is I have to uh, if I participate in this system, all right, when I get the bag tags, you know, there goes the, I'll be paying for it just like anybody else, but when I work the numbers on my own personal taxes, this way here is cheaper than when I talk to other residents in our community, all right? And they told me what they were paying in taxes compared to what this rate would be, this was cheaper. So let's say I only put out one bag every other week and I got twenty five bags, all right, twenty five tags, so I got twelve tags, all right? Well, at four bucks a thing, and let's say it's a hundred buck charge, it's only costing me fifty bucks to get rid of my garbage. I have fifty dollars worth of bag tags, but to add another wrinkle into this, Christie's gonna probably shoot me for this one, is since this is a commodity, the other twenty five bags, there's a lot of residents that wanna go ahead and use our sand, uh, South Fred landfill site. So if they come in with large dry, dry garbage, can they take those five bags? All right, five tags, which is twenty bucks or whatever, a four bucks bag, can they take that? And if the bill was twenty bucks, do you just hand them the tags back in? That's, that, that's, that's a, it's, that was another thought that, and there was a lady that went ahead and mentioned that to me, that is the same predicament I'm in, we're not gonna use the twenty five bags, but if I have twelve left or if I wanna use five of them to take something to the dump, can I hand that in instead of giving them the twenty dollars cash? I don't know, but I don't wanna complicate things anymore than they already are, but that was brought up. Everybody's made some valid points, but all I'm saying is, is let's run with it. My suggestion, what my vote is, is I'm gonna run with it for this year, all right? See how many hiccups in, there's gonna be hiccups, I guarantee it, all right? Then at the end of the day, see what the, see if people are gonna abuse it. You're not gonna stop people from throwing garbage out, because those individuals that are that, I have to be very careful, that would do something like throwing garbage in a ditch, you're not gonna change their mind, because that's that, those individuals are gonna do that, so. Not to belabor it, I feel that we should try this, see how it works. If it does work, great, and if we can prove it that it works, great. If it doesn't, well, then we're gonna have to come up another idea, because at the end of the day, it's the taxpayer that pays the bill. We have to come up with one point, well, now, one point seven million, I believe, I read beforehand on our total garbage, what we had cost us for the municipality.
Thanks, Councillor Shank. Go ahead, uh, Councillor Pennell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I just wanna uh, make some comments on, on some things that were said. I just wanna go out and say that uh, we heard from the deputations and, and uh, Councillor Martin about assessed values, impact is so far behind right now, that we're still running off the two, two thousand and sixteen assessed value of your home. So we're seven years behind. So if they ever get caught up, that will help, as with our taxes as well. I know that it can be adjusted on, on the mill rate, but I just wanna point out to you that all of our taxes are based on a value of what your home was worth as in, in two thousand and sixteen. We heard uh, about uh, tenant, tenants and landlords uh, in this program, there's no obligation whatsoever for the landlord to provide bag tags to the tenants, or whatever deal that they make out that between themselves, not, not with us. Recycling, I just wanted to comment more about the recycling. Uh, there's a new program coming out and Christie can talk about this too, if I get into trouble. Is that the recycling program is gonna be moved away from the municipality's responsibility to pay for that. And currently, I do believe uh, the, the weight for the discharge, um, what's gonna be happening is it's gonna be the producer's responsibility to pay for recycling of that. So therefore, much similar to buying a tire, there's a tire tax or electronic equipment. So when you go to a grocery store and uh, you happen to pick up a, a, let's say, a thing of potato salad and it's four ninety nine, uh, when this program comes through, you'll probably be paying uh, five fifty or something along those lines. So that's gonna be a big charge that's coming through, but that will alleviate excuse me, it is drying here, the municipality of that, but the end user will still be paying for the recycling at, at the end of the road. Even though that, uh, we're putting recycling out at the end of the road for the collection, it does charge the municipality for picking this up. And um, and like I said, in, and uh, also to uh, not to pick on you, Mr. Martin, but it, um, but you were saying about McDonald's and stuff like that, and I just wanna say that all grocery, all, all garbage majority of it is brought home from somewhere and put into our garbage and we're paying for that. And uh, that's, that's just the way that that is, but I just wanted to make those comments on that, uh. But the big one to keep in mind is that right now, our mill rates times our two thousand and sixteen value on our home is what you're paying for your taxes, seven years behind. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Pennell. Uh, go ahead, Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to Councillor Shink's uh, comments there, I mean, my, one of my concerns isn't just about people whose taxes are five thousand a year, eight thousand a year. One of my big concerns is people whose taxes are fifteen hundred a year or two thousand a year. I mean, they're gonna get a huge big increase. I mean, you're talking about keeping the regular tax rate down? Yes, two point eight nine, that's great. But if you add that to next year, it's gonna be two hundred dollars. This year, it's a hundred. People are gonna go with a seven point eight nine percent or a twelve point eight nine percent. Depending on, again, I know Dave, Councillor Pennell's talking about uh, impact and assessed values, but think about those people. We're hurting the ones that can't afford it the most. People with fifteen hundred dollars a year taxes, two thousand a year taxes, twenty five hundred a year tax. We're not talking necessarily about people with five thousand a year taxes or eight thousand a year. A hundred dollars to somebody like that doesn't mean as much as it does to somebody who pays fifteen hundred or two, two thousand. That's, I just wanna comment on that part of it. Councillor Pennell with his blue box and garbage uh bags. I, I, I don't know if I mentioned it to you or not, but I actually did a bit of a, a survey of my own garbage and blue, and uh, blue box and uh, garbage, my garbage for three, three pickups was fifteen times the weight for garbage as it was recycle. Yeah, I could have filled ten recycle boxes to equal one bag of garbage, so. I mean, weight or charge per ton, it's like what's the difference between a pound of feathers and a pound of lead? There's, there's, you know, I, there's a difference. And I don't know if anybody's noticed, some garbage bag tags have been, or not garbage bag tags, garbage bag bins are getting fewer in the parking lots of McDonald's and Tim Hortons. I used to go through Tim Hortons and put my old cup from yesterday in the garbage and get a new one. Take it, now I have to take it home because there's no bin there. And I've noticed just yesterday and today, similar things are happening in other takeout areas, so businesses are trying to cut down on what their patrons are putting in garbage, so just so I throw that out there. Thank you, Mayor. I'm done again.
Thank you, Councillor Martin. Is, uh, anybody else wanna weigh in prior to me weighing in? Uh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
So just to clarify, uh, through your worship, if we implement this program and we discover it's not working for the twenty twenty four budget, this is something we can revisit.
We can revisit anything we want after twenty twenty three. We're trying to establish a twenty twenty three budget right now. And we will, uh, which we have to do, and uh, right forthwith, we'll be dealing with the twenty twenty four budget or at least starting it. Could be a whole different conversation, but uh, is there any other comments? Okay, I'm gonna weigh in. Never in my wildest dreams did I ever believe that I would be this knowledgeable or talk this much with respect to garbage, but garbage is a big deal these days. Garbage is expensive to get rid of and so is recycling. What we're suggesting is to put a two hundred dollar levy and I would talk per year, a two hundred dollar levy on each tax bill that is applicable or has the ability to get curbside pickup. It's only to the residents that have the ability to get curbside pickup. Of that two hundred dollars, approximately one hundred and thirty three dollars of that fee or of that amount, amount, which is roughly seventy percent of, I think, nine hundred and eighty one thousand, but I haven't got those numbers directly in front of me. Seventy or approximately a hundred and thirty three dollars is to provide the service to drive by each person's house. Whether you put a bag of garbage out a week or whether you put a bag of recycling out a week. Very similar, and, and I know that I've used this example, very similar to paying for policing. We, we pay for policing to police our community. Most of us never ever call the police department to get anything done, but we still have to pay for that service. So in order to have that service, seventy percent of what the, the amount is, I think it's again, nine hundred and some thousand dollars of a one point uh, four million is to simply have that service drive by and pick up recycling if we put it out there. On top of that, we have to pay a tonnage fee to get rid of both garbage and recycling. So uh, that leaves about sixty seven dollars um, per two hundred to look after that tonnage fee. What we are, are suggesting is to um, issue on, on a yearly basis, fifty bag tags, which boils down to approximately a dollar for each bag tag, it's a dollar and change, dollar thirty four, I think, per bag tag. I have faith in our community. I think the people that are going to recycle will continue to recycle because we have a great community. We have a very, very um thoughtful community that will continue to do this, and I will not for a minute admit or, or think that we have people within our community that are only recycling for, for a financial gain. If we are to leave it on our taxes and pay, which was what we've been doing, the, the surplus, I think last year was eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That goes into general taxation. That is actually paid not only by the people that have curbside pickup. It's also paid by the people that aren't, don't have available curbside pickup, which is everybody. So uh, you know, we can get into some discussions and Lord knows that the coffee shops around this community, I've had this discussion many, many times a day, is that what is fair? Is it fair for people that do not have that service to supplement the people that do? Is it fair um, for people that have low taxes to have to pay the two hundred dollars compared to the people that have to, that have high taxes? So for some with the high tax bill, I think Councillor Shank may have brought it forward, was if you have an eight or nine thousand dollar tax bill, if, if we, if we just simply put it on the taxes, we're looking at, it could be anywhere from four, five, six hundred dollar increase. Now, at the other end, as Councillor Martin says, uh, that two hundred dollars, the, the tax increase on somebody that has a fifteen hundred dollar bill, uh, tax bill may only be roughly, say, let's, for argument's sake, say a hundred and twenty five dollars. So we, we understand that the process isn't perfect. We know that the process that we have now isn't perfect because each year we have a deficit to get rid of garbage and, and it's painful to believe that we have to spend a lot of money to get rid of garbage and there are probably better systems out there and, and for goodness sake, I hope that uh, we do find them because I think we really need to. I mean, the, it, it, when you sit back and look at, at the waste uh, removal and diversion that we're, we're, we're dealing with in today's world is really quite archaic. We dig a hole in the ground and put it in the ground, you know? And that's something that we did back in the sixties and the seventies and the fifties and probably prior to that, but um, it, it's really quite archaic. But we have to deal with what we have right now. We have a one point four million dollar tax, uh, one point four million dollar roughly bill just to get rid of waste and recycling, because it costs, even though we think we put the recycling out by the curb and think that it's free, it's really not free. Somebody has to pay to pick it up, somebody has to pay to take it and, and, and process and get rid of it, so, and those somebodies are us. We understand that the process and fair, we, 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 we get it, but we're trying to find the most reasonable process that's out there that will suffice most of us to, to, to get this, uh, the garbage situation done. Uh, I know that we've heard that in uh, probably twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six, we're looking at the, the clean, uh, give me a second here, I think it's the Clean Ontario, Clean Waste Ontario Act or the Waste Free Ontario Act, in which we're hoping, and I believe we will, we are going to see some efficiency saved because the cost of getting rid of recycle is going to be downloaded onto the producer as opposed to the consumer. So we should realize some efficiencies there, we're hoping. Of course, I think each and every conversation I've had with respect to that, we know that um, the producing, the producers aren't gonna lose money on it, and we all know where that, the extra money's gonna end up showing up, it's gonna show up in the prices of, of the product that's sitting on the shelves. There's very little we can do about that, but as far as, as getting rid of the recycle and, and processing the recycle, we're hoping to see some, some efficiencies there. And, and I really do believe that we will, and we are hoping that in seeing those efficiencies, we can turn those efficiencies back under our taxpayer. But time will tell, and again, things change and, and tomorrow could be a whole different uh, story, but that's where we're hoping to go with it, so. In any event, um, we, we, we've, we've talked at length about this and, and we've heard from a lot of people in the public, and I have to admit, I've heard, I've heard both sides of the coin and I've heard you know, and, and, and of course, with each conversation we have, we, you know, there's two sides of it. I mean, I've talked to the people, say, I only put a bag out every three weeks. Well, now you have the opportunity, instead of storing it into garage for three weeks, to put it out to the road once a week, even if it's a third of a bag and we don't have to wait and, and stuff the bag to the top before we take it to the, to the curb, because we wanna make sure we get to the value, whatever, three dollars or four dollar bag tags. In any event, um, I could talk probably all evening on this and, and I, and I won't. But we, we've been saddled with uh, with a, with, with, with a cost that we, we just try and have to address and try and do it as fairly as possible, and, and I'm hoping that uh, the system that we're, we're going to introduce is going to do that. Of course, and, and I, I hesitate to say this out loud, is, is that we could save one point four million dollars by not having the service at all. And I think that would be wrong. I really do. I think if we're looking to cause or see problems, that would be that would be the problems that we're going to see. So in any event, I will stop talking. I hope I've clarified things and if I haven't, by all means, reach out to me. Most people have. If there's anything that has come out of my talk, by all means, I'll give counsel the opportunity to, to, to rebut it or to say it. And if not, we'll look for a, a motion with respect to this. Seeing nothing. So we, uh, we have a, uh, recommendation that council received for information, the comments received or either proposed changes to the solid waste fees report. And further that council approved the proposed changes to solid waste fees for 2023 as outlined in this report, subject to the following conditions. The council consider and decide on the merits of Britain and verbal submissions received up to and including the council meeting. And further that should new information be received or further input received, raise points for further consideration, this report and opinion herein be revisited as needed. And I think that should that cover, Madam Clerk?
Through your worship, yes, the, the staff recommendation is to proceed with the direction as given on March thirtieth. If there's a desire to do something different, um, someone would need to make a motion to reconsider that direction that was given on March thirtieth.
Okay, um, does anybody wish to make a motion? Uh, sorry, Counselor Hicks.
May I ask for a recorded vote?
I believe you have that ability. Yes, you can, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
We'll just note there is no motion on the floor yet, but when there is, I will do a recorded vote.
Thank you, Counselor Hicks. We'll look for somebody to make a motion. Counselor Norrie. Uh, staff recommendation? Thank you. Is there a seconder to that motion? Counselor Shank. Do we have any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? And we will look to Madam Clerk to do a recorded vote if we don't, but we will see if there's any questions or comments first. Do we, I, I seeing no comments or questions, Madam Clerk. Sorry, we'll, I'll, I'll turn it over to you now.
Counselor Shank, word one?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks, word two?
Yes.
Counselor Pennell, word three?
Yes.
Counselor Norrie, word four?
Yes.
Counselor Martin, word five?
Emphatically no.
Deputy Mayor Calver? Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
So that is enough votes that the motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to the 2023 budget. Do we have, I guess Nicole will speak to that. Okay, I think you're up, Nicole.
Yes, so through you, Mr. Mayor, um, I don't have anything further to add to the report based on budget deliberations that we had, um, in January and March. We have come forward with, uh, operating, a combined operating and capital tax levy increase of 2.89% or three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty-one, um, as well as the $10 tax levy for curbside collection.
One hundred.
Sorry, uh, does anybody have any questions or comments with respect to Nicole's report or anything with respect to the budget? Counselor Shank.
Nicole, a hundred dollars.
Yes.
Oh, did I? I apologize. My apologies. A hundred dollars, yes. Yes, hundred dollar special levy.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Shank. Uh, I think Counselor Hicks, did you have any comments or questions?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that we got that corrected before the next onslaught of, uh, phone calls started from, from the, uh, public, thinking that we had imposed a $10 fee. So that was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you again, Counselor Hicks. Counselor Martin.
I just want to say that, uh, Nicole's been fantastic through this whole process and so is, uh, Christie. So we've all had a lot of questions the last week or so. And they've been fantastic in the job they've done. So I just want to acknowledge that.
Uh, thanks, Counselor Martin. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a recommendation that council received for information, the 2023 budget and further that council approved the 2023 budget, operating and capital budgets as presented and further that, that necess- necessary tax rate by law be prepared when all necessary information is available. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver, if there's no. And Counselor Shank is looking for a recorded vote.
Counselor Shank, word one? Counselor Hicks, word two?
Yes.
Counselor Pennell, word three?
Yes.
Counselor Norrie, word four?
Yes.
Counselor Martin, word five?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Calver?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
That motion is unanimously carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, moving on, CAO report, roads maintenance agreement and we'll be speaking to that.
I get this, your worship.
Thank you.
Just quickly, it's quite, quite evident in here, this is an agreement that's, uh, it's already been approved by county council, uh, but we think there's an opportunity here, look at this from a legal and operational and financial perspective and have it reviewed for budget 2024. Uh, both our budget as a revenue line item and the county's budget from a tax line item has this number in it. So we would not want to touch it for this year, but it needs some work for 2024.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments, uh, for Mr. Pinson? Counselor Shank.
Now, uh, I reviewed the contract, I re-read and I discussed, uh, you know, what's working, what isn't working, what is possibilities? But under the current contract, it can be reviewed, you know, at any time. And we get paid quarterly and looking at some of the, uh, what we're be, what we're, we're charging the county and the Kingston rates, uh, labor. We can lot, we can have a lot of that at any time. We can review our only, our own costing because it's right now it's 6,003, if I remember correctly, 6,337 dollars and 25 cents per kilometer that we get to maintain it, 148.5 kilometers, I think it is, or whatever. But the point is, is if we can go ahead and do this, I still totally agree with having an internal review. All right, and look at it and have our staff and, and our senior staff look to sit down. Uh, what are the numbers? Is there any inefficiencies? I- i- is it illegally or whatever? And just to have a overall review, but I look at the county, when I sat on county council, it's like the big brother. We might not agree all the times, but we all still have to live together. And we have that, that avenue for discussion if we do disagree. So, uh, I totally agree with you to have an, uh, have a review. I believe we should do a review ourselves, all right? But I feel that we should sign a contract with them for three years. We have the legal right to back out at any time or whatever and we could always argue back and forth, but we are a county, we're one quarter of the county, like I know not by assessment, we're more, way more than that. But the point is, is we all have to work together and I want to just reiterate, like, uh, yeah, that we're going to have to work together and we'll, we'll go through our arguments, but we're going to deal with it in an above manner and, uh, away we go. So, uh, I'll make the motion that, uh, the council approved the agreement to the construction maintenance morrow for, uh, for the next three years, uh, what it is. And then we do an internal review, which I agree with everything what John has said here. All right? And, uh, there we go. I'll make that motion.
Okay, it makes, I guess we're going to give everybody an opportunity to speak about it. We can make the motion, put it on the floor though if we wish, and then we can still have conversations about it. So, um, Madam Clerk, I'll look to you.
Through your worship, if somebody was willing to second that motion, council can, can discuss the motion that's been put on the floor.
I'll second that.
Yep, thanks, uh, Deputy Mayor Cowher. So we can still maintain and have some conversations with respect to this. Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Um, thank you, worship. Through you to, uh, Mr. CEO. What is, let me back up here a little bit. Where I'm going to go with this is that we are taking a, a deep dive in all of our contracts to see if there's any efficiencies. And I believe that we're going to be talking about another one here later on in this agenda. So I agree with doing it for one year. But could you tell me what is the implications and why we should sign for three years compared to one year? What, what would be the difference here?
Uh, through your worship, I would suggest that we sign for one year and then that way we can come up with a fresh contract for 2024 as opposed to amending a contract that we put in place for three years. We've initially had this reviewed by our lawyer who says it's basically an unbalanced contract. So what happens is we are providing a service to the county, but the county is dictating the prices. So what you'll find is they're using the same price per kilometer across multiple lower tiers. What we need to do is make sure we recover our costs for the service that we're providing to them. So I don't disagree with Counselor Shank. We all live sort of together. The common expression is there's only one taxpayer. But at the end of the day, this corporation, this municipality makes, needs to make sure that it's adequately compensated for the services that it provides to any other level of government.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up. So basically there, there is, uh, no legalities, whether we sign it for three years or one year. We, you, we just want to make sure that the numbers that are being provided to us, even though they're provided to every, everybody else that's signing this are in line. We want to make sure that we're covering our costs and that on any county roads, our residents aren't picking up the slack.
That'd be correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Shank.
So anytime I would look at that, I go ahead and I go, okay, I'll be the devil's advocate. So the contract at any time, tell me if I'm wrong. We review it and we find out it shouldn't be 6,000. It should be, our costs are a lot higher. We sit down at the table with the county and we say, hey, this is what our costs are to replace that vehicle. This is our depreciation. This is what our labor costs, this is what other costs are. We need more money. All right, then we sit down and negotiate. What my worry is, on the other side, you sign a one-year contract. All right, and then the other person says, well, if you don't like it, see you later, goodbye. But I'm an employee, all right, and I'm a young employee that works at the roads department. And I go, all right. The town doesn't sign a contract and we don't do 150 kilometers of road. We're not going to need as many snowplows and never many operators. So I'm thinking as an employee, I was young and I knew the town was having a chance of going down that road. I'd say, see ya, I'm going to be out of here. So what I'm trying to do is, is trying to kill two birds with one stone, still do our internal review, which I totally agree with, with you, John. At the same time is reassure that our young staff that, you know what, guys, we're doing this number, so we want to have the best bang for the buck. We're going to do an internal review. We're going to go ahead and, and have all the costs, find out exactly what is it actually costing, which I, I, you know, if they're doing or they're doing or whatever and have that presented to council, all right? After they've done their research and find out saying, yes, are we getting overpaid on some things or we're getting underpaid on some things? At the net income, are we covering our costs or, you know what I mean? Because we can't make money at it, but the point is we have to be able to replace our vehicles. And if we look after a county road, we should be able to do that. So that's the reason why I'm looking at it that way, all right? If it was just an arms rank that we didn't, we weren't a part of the county, then I totally agree with Counselor Pennell and totally agree with, with what John's doing. But at the same time, I'm trying to keep peace in the family. We all have to play in the same sandbox. And we want to make sure that, or that we're not costing us as, as the taxpayers, all right, more and we're getting our fair crack at it, but we can do that internally. All right, and then we can negotiate with the county if we find imbalances. You know, that's why I went, that's real.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Shank. Is there, uh, Counselor Norrie, then Deputy Mayor Cowher?
Uh, just similar to what Counselor Shank said, my concern is staff morale. Three years, as long as we can have a, keep an eye on the contract and do our studies, but I worry about staff morale and losing good staff when they think we may be getting rid of trucks and roads. So I'm, I'm thinking of the staff, so I'm in favor of the three year.
Thank Counselor Norrie, Deputy Mayor Calver.
I'm just going to reiterate what, uh, Counselor Norrie said. I mean, uh, you know, y- y- you need to have your staff morale up and if we're just going to do a one-year contract on this, it's kind of sends out the wrong signal all the way around. So it's revisitable, it's, it's workable. Let's, let's run it for the three years, like the rest of the municipalities around us and if we need to make changes, we've got the availability to do that.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing. We'll look for a recorded vote and I do believe we have a motion on the floor. Am I correct, Madam Clerk? Oh, sorry, did I miss Counselor Hicks? Did you want to weigh in, Counselor Hicks? Okay, no, no, that's good. And, um, we're going to do a recorded vote, so just hang tight here.
So the motion put forward by Counselor Shank is that council approved the agreement for the construction and maintenance of county roads and bridges agreement for the three-year term and further that staff conduct a thorough financial, operational and legal review of the agreement in advance of 2024. So request has been made for a recorded vote. Counselor Shank, word one? Counselor Hicks, word two? You are on mute.
I'm sorry, uh, yes, if everyone could use their microphone so I can hear what's being said, that'd be great. Thanks.
Uh, Counselor Pennell, word three?
Uh, no.
Counselor Norrie, word four?
Yes.
Counselor Martin, word five?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Calver?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, moving on to 12.4 CAO staff report renewal of general engineering services contract. And I believe that would be you again, John.
Uh, your worship, that's just a follow-on from the last discussion we had where I was asked to contact Jewel to see if they're okay with that and I did and they are.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments with respect to, uh, the report? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you through your worship. Um, I've kicked this around many ways from Sunday and again, we've always had a five-year contract with Jewel. They continue to look after us, treat us well. I, I would like to put a motion forward that we renew for another five years with Jewel Engineering. It's all about harmonization when it comes to, uh, the rest of the municipalities around us that our roads and bridges do connect to. So I would like to put a motion forward to extend that to a five-year contract versus one year.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver. Um, and that would negate the issue with respect to the RFP, I'm guessing. Okay, um, Deputy Mayor Calver has a motion on the floor. Do we have a seconder? Thank you, Counselor Shank. Is there- Thank you, Counselor Shank. Is there any further questions or comments or concerns with respect to it? Go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Thank you, Worship. I, I just, I know that once the motions fail, or if I lose a vote, I should let it go, but this comes right into this one. If we have asked staff to go and look at our contracts to see if there's any efficiencies, and, and our minimum that we can ask for an extension on a contract is a year, why are we asking for something to be done? And then turning around and overriding that. If, if the vendor has agreed to extend our contract by one year, just so we can go for a request for quotes and Jewel does a great job for us. And if they are successful and coming back, that would be great. But I just have a problem with us asking for something to be done and then having it overrode.
Thanks, Counselor Penel. Is Counselor Norrie?
On this one, I have to agree with Counselor Penel. We've asked staff to do something. Jewel's agreed. I hope it doesn't end up biting us, but we, I don't want to ask staff to do things and just not do it. So for this one, I will be in favor of the one or against this five-year motion.
Thank you, Counselor Norrie. Is there any other comments or questions? Oh, I see, Counselor Hicks, and then I'll get to you, Counselor Shank.
Through your worship, I agree with Counselor Penel and Counselor Norrie. Based on our last discussion, Jewel knows they're, they're a large company. They're, this is nothing new for them. And I think we're doing a disservice to the taxpayers if we don't do our due diligence and do a thorough review. They've granted us a one-year extension. We should make use of it. And if the RFP comes back in Jewel's favor, then hey, they were right all along. So, but we need to do our due diligence. So I'm not in favor of a, a five-year extension.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Hicks. Counselor Shank, did you want to go or?
Just, Jessica, the following procedure, if I, just correct me because things change in time. But to even discuss anything on the floor, you have to have a mover and a second or correct?
That is correct.
So there we go. Now we can discuss a B. So after doing a little bit of more research, the county did an RFP for engineering also, did they not, Mayor? For engineering, engineering services and they were, and Jewel was awarded. I totally agree with Counselor Penel and Norrie also. You know what I mean? I just wanted to, you know, you have to move something to get it on the floor so you can discuss it.
Yeah, they, they may have Counselor Shank. I, I can't say for sure when it was or, but I, it's ringing a bell for me. So I, I'm believing that they probably did. I know that the, the company we're talking about represents a lot of people in our area, so.
And we're, we're piggybacking on their fees?
If I may, your worship, we, to Counselor Shank, we have our own RFP with Jewel, as does LNA County. And every municipality goes out for RFPs. So we could argue that every municipality tenders those contracts, right?
Is there any differential in fees with the county pays and what we pay or any other municipality pays?
The, the issue here is through your worship to Counselor Shank is to also make sure that the things that we're looking for in the contract, because I know some of the asset management things have changed since the last five years. Some of the stuff that we're doing in GIS, we just want to make sure that we've got all those things in there. Because when we did the last tender, there were two separate RFPs and one company did better than, but like I said, when I spoke to Jewel, this is not a performance issue. It's making sure that we're all inclusive in terms of the engineering services that we need.
May I ask another question?
Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
What on, under asset management? Now, maybe I shouldn't do my homework. It just gets me in trouble. Sorry, guys. But the county has an asset management report that costs them money. Is there any fee if we use their asset management program?
So through your worship, each municipality is required to do its own asset management program, right? And manage its own assets. So the county, we are working with the county on a current asset management program where there is a systems development piece jointly done. But, you know, we will keep coming back that we are our own corporation, even though there's only one taxpayer in the county. So we have to do our own asset management. They do their asset management.
So, but the point is, is that so you
Thanks, Counselor Shank. Is there any other questions or comments or concerns? Seeing none, I guess what we can do is call the vote, Madam Clerk. I don't believe we have a recorded vote for this one, which is called a vote. I, I can comment if
I'd like to hear your comment. You're a fearless leader now, so.
Well, you, you give me far too much credit, Counselor Shank. You really do. I, I, I really do have to agree with what's been said. I mean, Jewel Engineering has, has, has been aces for us. They provided all kinds of great service. And I have absolutely no qualms with, with the product they are providing. I do, I have to agree that if, if we've already approached them and they're good with that, it'd be a different situation if we approached them and they weren't good with it. But we've already approached them and, and they're good with the one-year extension. And I fully expect that Jewel Engineer will come back with, again, probably an RFP that's going to put everybody else to the curb. But to, 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 to piggyback or to follow up, which, which has already been said, if we've asked our staff to do an RFP, or if we asked our staff to look into it, the, that the company or opponent is good with it. How, how do, how do we go against that, really? And that's, and that's just the reality of it. Unfortunately, and like I say, it has absolutely nothing to do with the product that's being provided by Jewel, because I say they have, they've been fantastic with us since, since we've been in business with them. So and, and any of the reports or the products that they provided is, has been top-notch. So it's most definitely not a, a question of product. It's just a matter of doing our due diligence, I think, as Counselor Hicks had said. So in any event, I will quit talking and we will look for a vote if I haven't stirred up or created any other conversations. Go ahead, Counselor Norrie.
Can I just have the motion read again? So, you know.
The motion on the floor is that council received for information the renewal of general engineering services contract report. And further, that council approved the extension of the current general engineering services contract for a period of five years.
And we have a mover and a second or, and the motion is on the floor, so we'll call the vote, I believe. And I don't think we have a request for a recorded vote. I think we're just, just a regular vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed? Motion has failed. Now I guess what we will do is look for another motion, because I do believe that we need to deal with this, I think. Counselor Norrie.
I move staff recommendation for the one-year approved contract.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Counselor Norrie, and thank you, Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, and seeing none, all in favor of that motion? Opposed? The motions, motions carried. Thank you. Next up, the 12.5, the Nappany Train Station. And who is speaking to that one? Mr. Pinson? Or?
I know Chris, Chris wrote it, but I can, I can speak to it very quickly. So I think the, the big issue with this one is making sure that we give council notice around the potential use of the train station, given its vandalism over the past little while. We've, we do have in the budget some money to fix that. The problem is if we start opening it again for via rail passengers to use, we risk having it vandalized again because it's wide open. So what we want to do by way of this report is, one is to ensure we know that this is a historic building. So at some point in time, we have to give this building to the historical committee to make sure that it's managed appropriately. But to get it in the public domain that if we close this station to via traffic, what this could potentially do to potential riders of the Via train, if there are any within the municipality. Because if we were to close the train station via rail, may stop, they may cease stopping in Nappany. And that was really the message we wanted to get out there. What we did not want to do was close the train station via rail, say, we're not stopping anymore, and everybody going, what just happened? I'm happy to take any questions on this issue.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Martin.
It's, it's more of a concern with me because in the future, and, and even now, we'd like to have the train stop more frequently. And so if we don't have that train station available, I'm afraid they'll never consider increasing the service.
So through your worship to Counselor Martin, this is one of the reasons why I think I got out of the federal public service. We had some discussions over the last couple of weeks with Via Rail. Have you ever heard of HFR? High Frequency Rail is basically the new model. And there's apparently a public-private partnership established for this. I now know more about this than the guys from Via Rail that I was talking to. As does most of our staff that were dealing with it. High Frequency Rail on dedicated tracks, electric trains. And the train is going to go from Ottawa to Peterborough to Toronto, which would likely bypass Kingston, Nappany area. So Via Rail kind of anecdotally says, yeah, don't give it up, but you'll, because you'll never get it back. But when you try and get from them what their future offering is, they really don't know. The other thing that we position with them, and from personal experience, I know that if I was to get on the train to go to Toronto from Nappany, it would cost me $100 more for a family of four than if I were to drive to Belleville. And to get people on a train, you need not be more expensive. You should actually be cheaper. And the people that should be using the train probably don't have cars, so they can't drive to Belleville, but it's more expensive. So it's almost counterintuitive that that train station is even viable from a transportation network standpoint. And I know I'm going on with this. Realistically, the train is probably the best mode of transportation to help us get people to Belleville, people from Belleville to Kingston along that highway, 401 corridor. But quite frankly, it's unaffordable.
Thank you, John. Is there any other questions or comments?
Move staff recommendation.
So if I may, your worship, before we, and I don't have the report, but what we want to do is make sure that we go out with a communication to residents and try and understand what they use that train station for, if they actually use the train station, and see if there are alternate uses for that train station.
And that, some of that or most of that would be done through the, the Heritage Committee, I'm guessing. Okay, we have a motion, staff recommendation by Counselor Shank. Do we have a second or? Deputy Mayor Cowherd, is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to this? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motions carried.
If, if I may, your worship, just so that I'm not, and I'm just thinking what I said, I, I do not want to purport that I'm speaking for Via Rail when I say they could potentially stop or cease stopping. It were surmising that they may cease stopping.
Yeah, no, thank you for clarifying that. Next up, the 2022 capital results and reserve balances. And I believe Nicole will probably be speaking to that.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, based on the report that I have submitted, I have represented what the capital results for the year 2022 came in. These are unaudited numbers, so they are subject to audit. I have provided a high-level summary in the report with attached reports. I want to apologize. I know some of the, the schedules that were in the backup are kind of hard to see when you're looking at them in print form. So we will be sure to adjust that going forward. A couple of things that I want to note before I take any questions. So when you're looking at the capital expenditure analysis, you will notice down on the bottom of the second page detail, there is a section that represents the in-year additions and previous year's carryforward projects. I just want to again highlight that the budget figures there are not representative of what was just remaining on the project, but the full budgeted amounts for those projects. So the numbers do look a little bit inflated in some areas. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. There is a column in there beside the budget variance for status of the project. So that just indicates essentially where we are with the, with the project. Most of them are in a state where we are ready to capitalize. And when we get into the reserve section, actually, before we go down that far, I'll open it up. Do we have any questions regarding the capital itself?
Thanks, Nicole, Counselor Shank.
Nicole, under other funding, that's OCF. I have funding and provincial grants and all gas tax and everything else that's provincial.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the other funding would cover off any federal or provincial grants, as well as any DC funding that we brought in. And then there are a couple other miscellaneous pieces. So I know under the utilities for the water meters, there are some water meters that we sell, but also offset the cost of that.
Yeah, thanks, Nicole. Is there any other questions for Nicole? See, sorry, Counselor Penel.
On, on the large sheet, that's where we're right now?
Yeah.
On the roads? On the roads where the internal salaries and vehicle costs were not included in the budget? To capture that, that was taken from our reserves.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we did not have to take that from reserves in this case. So the roads as a whole was able to cover that off through savings within other projects. So there wasn't any additional monies that necessarily had to come from reserves to cover that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Is there any other further comments or questions with respect to this? Seeing none? Oh, sorry, Counselor Shank.
C can, 2022, I hate to be this way. How many C cans did we buy, you know?
I think the chief, fire chief can comment on that, so.
Through your worship, there were four C cans purchased for the project in total, two 40s and two 20 footers.
You're, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, but are you referring to the utility C cans?
I take that back. We did not purchase those ones.
So the only reason why, because it was $9,413. The budget is $12,000, but all I'm saying is you got four C cans for that. So that's
Yeah, I think, I think Christie wants to comment on that, Mike. Thanks.
Through you. Yes, that was just the purchase of one C can for additional storage of materials with impending them, the move from 45 Commercial Court to store some of our in-ground maintenance supplies and materials. And it included a roll-up door and some shelving units within, within the C can.
I'm sorry. It's just that I can buy a purchase of 40 foot by eight foot six by eight foot six for grand, brand new, one use. That's the only reason why I was wondering. It's just that, you know, always be frugal. But because there's, I think, another, I think there's a 100 left or whatever over the Picton port. All right, because they had quite a few. I know they're still for sale, I believe, some of them. So, just.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. Thanks, Mike. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we've got a stack recommendation. Seeing none, we've got a stack recommendation that Council received for information, the 2022 financial capital results and updated reserve balances. We'll look for motion to move that recommendation. Oh, sorry, Nicole's not done yet.
We hadn't touched on the reserve piece yet. I mean, if council doesn't have any questions, that's fantastic, too. But with, also with the updated reserve balances. So I did want to make note, when we were going through our budget proceedings, we, we were ballparking that we had about two point nine two, two point nine million for the ending balance in our town reserves. I was forecasting what our funding needed to be for capital spend. I was not incorporating what was collected through the tax base last year for capital. So that helped to improve that number to where the results are sitting in this report. I've also included a small table there just showing the change between the balances. So the portion that was used from tax base, the utilities portion, and then the net change in town capital funding between the capital and what went to the operating reserves to represent the change there. So I'm open to any questions on reserves.
Yeah, I think Counselor Shank has one.
Nicole, just so I read this right, the town reserves last year from 2021 ending balance was eight million, whatever. And ending 2022 was three point seven. And so they spent four point five million, five four million, five hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars last year out of the reserves.
Yes, that is correct. That is what we withdrew through the reserves to help fund capital.
Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I think we can look for a motion now, if I'm not mistaken. We have a staff recommendation. Received for information, the 2022 financial capital results and updated reserve balances moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Twenty twenty-three quarterly financial operating report, and I believe that's Nicole as well, so go ahead, Nicole.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we have attached our quarterly report. So typically for this time of year, if we, if we are strictly just dealing based off pure fractions, we would be looking at about a twenty-five percent spend. We are on mark to hit that. We're slightly lower than that actually, right now. First quarter, not a whole lot of operations that are really starting to ramp up. So nothing too spectacular that was jumping off the page that we need to report back to council. As activities for spring and summer start to ramp up, we'll see those costs start to increase into Q2. But I'm open for a comment or a question.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Nicole with respect to this report? Counselor Shank.
Nicole, under, you did all this work, you know, it'd be unfair of anybody not to ask any questions. So it says cemeteries, staff, materials and supplies. Can you explain that one to, for three hundred and twenty-eight thousand? Hold on a minute, let me just, so I don't, as the annual budget, actual today. Eighty-four thousand dollars, what in the cemetery were you spending? Sorry.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, those numbers are actually the fire numbers. The cemetery values would be above that subtotal line.
I was getting late. I asked a lot of questions. You're gonna have to repeat that to me. Eighty-four thousand dollars, four hundred and ten. It goes to materials and supplies. That's nine-one-one numbers?
No, that's, that's fire costs. So those numbers that are below the cemetery's line, that's the fire department. The values for the cemetery's program are the values that are above that yellow-coded line. So the materials and supplies for cemetery are?
So total fire is, okay, I'm looking under fire and said, I thought that was cemeteries from there down, and I'm going, oh, okay. So the chief's off the hook on that one. There we go.
Well, I don't know if he is or not, but. Yeah, thanks, thanks, Nicole. Counselor Penel.
Thank you, worship, through you, Nicole, because we've been talking about this tonight. Under solid waste, I see that there's a negative seventeen percent charge or spending rate, I guess. Could you just explain that to the people? I only guess why that is.
Yes, so actually, in this value, so under the grants line here, we actually had to make an error. So as we, or we made an error, grants of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, as we dove into that number, that's actually grant money related to 2022 that we had to accrue back. So that dropped that grant revenue down by about seventy-six thousand dollars, so there is an adjustment for that. And I can provide an updated report on, on these values. When I pull it up, let me just pull up my live version. So right now, for solid waste, with that adjustment made, total actuals, including revenues, is actually sitting at seventy-nine dollars of cost for Q1, being offset by bag tag revenues and grants. So we have seen quite an increase on bag tag revenues with all the discussions that we've been having. And the grants, the grants that are coming in, that's from Stewardship Ontario for recycling.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel for now. Is there any other questions or comments from Nicole on this report? Seeing none, we've got a recommendation that Council received for information, the financial operating results for the period of January through to March 2023, Q1 results. Look for motion to move that. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Sorry, I didn't push the button. Twenty twenty-three surface treatment program. And we, who's going, Jeff, you gonna speak to that? Great, thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Is there any questions with respect to Jeff's report? Counselor Penel.
I think you worship through you, Jeff, you just mentioned that this was in the budget. And I don't have that in front of me right now, but how did this come in compared to what our budget was? Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Is there any other questions for Jeff with respect to this report? Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
Now, Abrams Side Road, and did, did they have to do any warranty work? Or did they look at any of the wear, darn chip work that they did last year? I just want to make sure that when this gets awarded, that they do it in summertime, so when you get some heat, so we can get that stone into the, I'm not a land expert, don't get me, you know, paving expert, but you know, I've had some people's, you know, there's been some complaints with some of the roads and monograal that was off, so. I was just wondering about any of the warranty work, or did they come down, take a look at it?
We, we, we shoot every year to have our last surface treatment going down by August fifteenth. With Abrams Road, it was a particular, we put it down the first of September. We do receive warranty into October to put it down. The, the reason we get it, we get some more customer complaints due to the float not being able to have wore itself off of the road, and then we will go in and pick that up prior to winter coming. With the application being, at the time of season, it was, we had a little bit of excess flow going into the, the residence lawns there. But yes, we will look at it, and I, taking a look at it, it looks like the, the surface is adhering well. It was just the float was unable to be removed prior to winter operations.
Thanks, Jeff. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, we've got a recommendation that Council received for information, Infrastructure Services, twenty twenty-three Surface Treatment Program Report. And further, that Council award Part C, the Town of Greater Nappany portion of the joint twenty twenty-three Surface Treatment Tender with the County Lennox and Addington to the Lowest Bitter Greenwood paving for the sum of eight hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty cents, including town portion of payable HST. Look, moved by, dep, sorry, Counselor Penel, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, Jeff. Twelve point nine BIA survey results, and I'm thinking, Madam Clerk, are you speaking to that?
Through your worship, yes, I am. I'll also add, because a couple people sent me notes. Counselor Hicks sends her regrets, she had to leave the meeting a little bit early. There, I don't have a lot to add to this report. This is the result of the process that Council began back in January. The results of the survey that we sent out are conclusive with respect to Council's ability to pass a bylaw to re-establish a BIA. Therefore, staff would recommend that Council work with the Downtown Advisory Committee to determine what next steps should look like. I will also note that in the budget, there's not a specific allocation for downtown events or beautification or things like that. So you will be working with the remainder that was left over from last year's budget. Unless Council passes a resolution to do a budget amendment at a future date.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Do we have any comments or questions with respect to the BIA survey results or the report that's brought of us?
We followed the process, we did, but they, you know, after the public meeting, and I think, yeah, and they spoke, they're, they make their own destiny. And they, they way to go, and.
Thank you very much, and I was going to say those exact words, is that we followed the process. We involved the people from the downtown in, in the BIA area. And, and whether it's unfortunate or fortunate, I'm not sure exactly what, but we've decisions made by the people that are involved in that. So I think the process ran fairly well. I, I probably should check with Madam Clerk, how much of a headache it was, but I don't believe that it wasn't too bad. And, and the people have spoken, I guess. You're absolutely right, Counselor Shank. So is there any other firman, further comments or questions, Counselor Norrie?
Just staff recommendation.
Thank you very much. Staff recommendation moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Penel. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Twenty twenty-three application for outdoor patio license, and Madam Clerk, will you speak to that one?
Through your worship, I don't have a lot to add to this report, but I can take questions.
Yep, thank you very much, Counsel for now.
Sorry, just staff recommendation, please, like to move that.
Thank you, Counsel for now, staff recommendation, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Council meeting date changes, and I think we'll move to Madam Clerk again, sorry to put you to so much work this evening, Jess.
So through your worship, the purpose of this is if we are changing the meetings, meeting dates, we do require a council resolution to do that. Staff have identified two meetings that should be, or an additional meeting that should be added to accommodate budget discussions for 2024, or the, the pre-budget discussions, that the August meeting will need to be moved again to accommodate the AMO conference. And the mayor has also requested with Council's blessing to move the June meeting. Available for any questions?
Thanks, Jess. Is there any questions or comments with respect to that report? I see your hand, Counsel for now.
Yes, you did, but once again, I just wanted to move staff recommendation.
You moved by Counsel Penel, seconded by Counselor Shank. If there is no further comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaws, thirteen point one, bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three one to confirm unauthorized participation in Omar's primary pension plan. The primary plan and the retirement compensation arrangement for the Omar's primary pension plan, RCA, each as amended from time to time of the employees of the Corporation of the Town of Greater Nappany, employer identified herein. That was a mouthful. We'll look for a motion to put it on the floor for sec, for second and final reading, moved by Counsel Penel, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no questions or comments or concerns, we'll have the first, second, and final reading can finally pass. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three two, amend fire, sorry, amend service fees. We, we've all had an opportunity to see that, I believe. Did you want to comment at all, Madam Clerk?
Through your worship, I'll just note that there was unfortunately a typo in the bylaw that came last meeting from what was actually approved by Council at the meeting in March, so this is just to correct it before it goes into effect on May first.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll look for a motion, put it on the floor for the first, second, and final reading. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Penel. If there's no further comments, questions, concerns, yep, go ahead, Counselor Shank.
So Jessica, under the, I just reading this again, but it says road closing request. In years past, when certain functions happen, they want to close a certain road. Is that, okay, thank you.
Sorry, through the mic, no, that's the one to permanently close, not for temporary.
Thanks, both Jess and Counselor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions, concerns, we'll read it at first, second, and finally pass. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three three, to amend bylaw number zero six dash one four, bylaw to regulate the use of waste management system for the Town of Greater Nappany to increase certain fees. We'll look for a motion to put it on the floor and then look for some discussion. Moved by Counsel Penel, seconded by Counselor Norrie. And before the second and final reading, is there any comments, questions, or concerns? Counsel for now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, to Madam Clerk. I have a note here, and I've been looking at it all night, trying to find out where I scribbled that from. But it's a little concerned when I read the bylaw that with this new program we have on, I just wanted to make sure that it was just for two thousand and twenty-three. And maybe it could be marked as a trial, and that doesn't automatically turn over for two thousand and twenty-four without our review.
So through your worship, the amendment to this bylaw is to say that the town may by bylaw establish an annual fee to be levied and may also mail out tags. That will always need to be done by annual tax levy. That's always going to be a question that comes back to council every year. This bylaw doesn't authorize that. It just links the two bylaws for someone reading it to know that this garbage bylaw may not tell you the whole picture about bag tags, and you might want to also go look at the tax levy bylaw to see if there's anything there.
Great, thank you, thank you for the explanation.
Thanks, Counsel for now. Is there any other questions or comments before the second and final reading? Counselor Martin. Thanks, Counselor Penel. Is there any other questions or problems for the second and final reading? Counselor Martin. Madam Clerk, do we have a recorded vote before the second and final reading, or I guess we do the second and final reading, then a recorder vote on it? Is that the the method of getting us to where we need to go?
It would be a recorded vote on the motion that is before council right now, so I can I can do that. There's no discussion.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, then we do need the second and final reading. We'll do a recorded vote. Am I correct? I will leave it to you in your capable hands if I'm accurate there.
Yes, okay, sorry. Counselor Ward one, Counselor Shank. Angela is not here. Counselor Ward three, Counselor Penel?
Yes.
Ward four, Counselor Martin?
Norrie, yes.
Sorry, sorry, it's late. Ward five, Counselor Martin?
No.
Deputy Mayor Calver?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three four to appoint a deputy clerk. And we'll look for motion to move it, and then we can have some conversation if required before the second and final reading moved by Counselor Penel, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns before we have the second and final reading? Seeing none, second and final reading, and we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. New business. Do we have any new business here that we have identified? Seeing none, nope. We can. It's up to you. We can do it in under new business if we want. We can do it under. Yeah, let's do it under new business, I guess. Let's let's give it a go and see what happens. Let's do it under new business. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver. Yep, so go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Sorry to interrupt, but I just was wondering if we could have motion go past ten o'clock just in case it's needed.
We can. I'm hoping we're not going to get there, but we can do the motion to go past ten o'clock if you wish. Madam Clerk.
Through your worship, if if this new business statements by members, there's a possibility we go past ten o'clock. Doesn't hurt to get the motion on the floor if necessary, unless nobody wants to go past ten o'clock, and you want to have to wrap this up in thirteen minutes.
Let's give it a couple of minutes to see where we show up first. Let's leave it till five to Dave and see where we end up. How's that sound? New business, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
So it's approached by a lady the other morning, Sunday morning there at a breakfast we're at, and she's pretty disgusted with the appearance of the flower beds out in front of Town Hall, and she has volunteered her services to look after and get these in shape. Obviously, with some funding towards, you know, purchase of flowers or whatever, but she's she's volunteered her time to look after these flower beds and get them whipped into shape. So I just want to bring that up.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. I know that we've the information has already been forwarded on to infrastructure, corporate services, I believe. Are we going to require any kind of a motion or anything for that, Madam Clerk, or is it? How do we? How are we going to deal with that one?
Are you just informing council of this information, or is council needing to endorse or pass any motions related to it? If it's just for information, I don't believe a motion is required.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Shank. I know I know the information has already been forwarded on, but go ahead.
Do we have a communities bloom committee still?
I believe we do. I haven't been in contact with them lately, but I believe we do.
It's just that Deputy Mayor Calver went ahead, and if you have a lady that wants to donate their time, if she can piggyback with communities and Bloom, I think there's an asset that wants to, if anybody wants to volunteer, hey, then why not? You know, and as long as Brett's gonna, I don't know if he's still awake or not, but Brett, you know, that he works with the the individuals and and, you know, I don't want to lose a volunteer that wants to donate their time, you know?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Shank. I think I think I know I know the information was forwarded on to to Mr. Zatterburg earlier today. And I think what we can do is I think Mr. Zatterburg has some fairly direct knowledge as to where we want to go with it, but we'll leave it in his capable hands, I think. If that's probably the fairest or the safest way of doing it. Okay, can we move on to notices of motion then? If nobody has any notices of motion, we'll move on to statements by members. Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank all of our staff that have worked immense hours on putting together this budget, trying to get everything done up the way we've we've got it done. I just want to say kudos for our staff. They've worked extremely hard to get to where we are and looking forward to working on the twenty twenty-four budget.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any other statements by members? Seeing none, C A O remarks. John, do you have any remarks?
Just one, your worship, if council was to wander around downstairs, it's quite empty. We had a very successful giveaway day. I'd like to thank Brandon, the staff, the clerk, and I wrote this weekend. There's some interesting folks that show up with trailers to take away stuff. So we're we're one step closer to this building and twelve Market Square advancing our plans to sell one and to rehab the other one for future use.
Yep, thank you very much, John. The forward calendar, I know we've had the opportunity to take a look at. Does anyone want to comment on with respect to the forward calendar that we have on our page there? Seeing none. Ah, we'll look for a motion to confirm proceedings. Moved by Counselor Penel, seconded by Counselor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Motion for German moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much, folks. We made it under the ten o'clock time. It's nine fifty-two. Thanks for joining us. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.